Five P M. We'll bring the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of reflection. Dear God, we are grateful and thankful for this day and the blessings, opportunities and challenges that come along with it. We pray now for strength and your guidance as we humbly ask that you enable us with our different thoughts and ideas to work together toward a common goal of improving our town and serving the residents of Juneau Beach. Help us find it in ourselves, do each of us act with grace, honor and compassion as we take this opportunity to render service to our community. Amen. There's going to be one small substitution or change to the agenda. We're going to exchange item number two for item number one. So we'll have the swearing in of our new police officer, John Kenny. First, are there any other changes, additions or substitutions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead, Jeff.
With the consent of, with the consensus of the council, I'd like to take item five and make it item seven. And make item seven, item five.
Okay, anything else? All right, there, there being none, we'll recognize our chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, everybody. It's another happy occasion. I'd like to welcome the newest member of the Juneau Beach Police Department, Officer John Kenny. He's coming to Juneau Beach Police Department. He has served ten years with the NYPD, most recently as a sergeant. And actually, I think eleven years, ten? Yeah, that was close then. Okay. And John was assigned to various important positions within the NYPD. So again, he's going to be a great addition to the department. He's got vast experience. I'd also like to welcome his wife, Toni, who's here tonight, and his baby girl, Alicia. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes.
All right. John is, like I said, a very well-rounded officer. He was in various special operations assignments. I've had great conversations with him over the process. We have a multi-faceted background and we do a lot of interviews and, you know, John's got great experience. He's got a great disposition for the department. You know, what we find out over the years, it's more than just their experience. It's, it's, there's, there are the right fits for certain communities and he's very outgoing and he's very personable and, and again, he's, he's, he's got great law enforcement, crime fighting experience. So we're very happy to have him with us. He's going to be a great addition to our department and he's going to be a great addition to the town of Juneau Beach. So with that, I'd like to welcome John and congratulations, John.
Okay, we're going to swear you in now.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John Kenny.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Florida.
Of the state of Florida.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the town of Juneau Beach.
The town of Juneau Beach.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Of the town of Juneau Beach.
The town of Juneau Beach.
And the Juneau Beach Police Department.
And the Juneau Beach Police Department.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
Of the Juneau Beach Police Department.
Of the Juneau Beach Police Department.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Mayor, you want to come down?
It's a man's touch.
She's beautiful. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, the next item on the agenda is we're going to recognize guest speaker Megan Houston from the Palm Beach County Office of Resilience. Megan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you so much for having me. I'm also joined today by my colleague Natalie Friendberg, also with the Resilience Office. We're really happy to share some of what Palm Beach County is working on with resiliency and sustainability and then talk through what kind of resources are available and how, you know, potentially we can help support and collaborate with Juneau Beach. Next slide. I'll give some background on Palm Beach County's Resilience Office mission. We're here to ensure a sustainable and thriving Palm Beach County while confronting a changing climate. We think of our work in three different buckets of climate adaptation. So planning for those climate threats like sea level rise and adapting our infrastructure to meet those needs. We think about climate mitigation, which is reducing our greenhouse gas emissions so that we can help reduce the, the impacts that might occur from climate change and then sustainable development. So we want to make sure that the, the natural resources that we're using are here for us and our future generations. Next slide. When we think of climate change threats, it's, it's broader than just sea level rise. We think about things from extreme heat, which is one of the most dangerous impacts of climate change to wildfires even and harmful algal blooms, which I'm sure this council can appreciate can cause a lot of impact. And you'll notice sea level rise is not even called out as a specific threat because it's one of these exacerbating factors to the water-related threats. So sea level rise will make tidal flooding and storm surge, groundwater inundation a little bit more challenging. Next slide. So I'll dive right into some of the projects that the county is working on to, to deal with, with these issues related to climate change mitigation. Again, this is reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and trying to increase our water and energy conservation. We comparatively to our northeastern cities who use a lot of heating, you know, comparatively, we, we as a Florida county do quite well. That being said, we still have sixteen million tons of carbon dioxide equivalent that we emit annually. So we're working on ways to, to track our inventory. First measuring how much we are consuming and then looking for those, those cost-effective projects that can reduce not just emissions but our, our operating expenses. We have about twenty-five million dollars of electric bills that we pay each year as a county. So anything that we can do to save there is a win. One of the, the pictures on the slide is an example of our sports lighting, which we have converted from the older technology to the newer LED light fixtures, which are much more efficient. We're also looking at solar photovoltaic opportunities, both onsite and offsite. So we've had some kind of pilot installations with FPL's Solar Now program, and then we've invested in their community solar opportunity through Solar Together where we can offset some of our consumption by this participation in that program. We're also promoting electric vehicle infrastructure and getting ready for that technology that, and that market adoption. We also oversee the property assessed clean energy program within Palm Beach County. And so if you don't have your own enabling ordinance, we would probably be, or we are responsible for that kind of financing in managing that which can be used for, by a private homeowner or business to pay for solar and energy efficiency and as well as wind minute, wind mitigation and roof repairs that help people get their homes storm ready. Next slide. So energy efficiency doesn't have to be super complicated. This is a picture of one of the light fixtures in our Vista Center garage and we've replaced two hundred and eight of these and we saved our, we saved our bills by fifteen percent. So it's simple stuff like this, which we started as kind of our low-hanging fruit that we've operationalized and, you know, you keep doing this again and again and again, and the dollars add up. We're also looking at how we can do something called daylight harvesting, which sounds complicated, but it's really just using natural light and adjusting the, the, the electrical demand based on how much natural light is available. So trying to make sure we're, we're using the resources that we have. Next slide. We've also looked at some more complicated technology with our Palm Beach Sheriff's Office Bulk Vault Walk-in Cooler and Freezer. We had one technology and we replaced that to use these different water-cooled condensing units. And because of that switch, it saves our maintenance costs. It also saves our HVAC load and, and helps increase that efficiency. Next slide. We, I mentioned electric vehicles. We have a whole suite of pilot projects happening right now as we are preparing for this emerging technology. We've just installed six spaces at our headquarters and at the governmental center downtown and our Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Weinroth is on the, on the picture here, very excited to be charging in and plugging in his car. We will be rolling that out at, at a few different locations moving forward. So we want to make sure before we just go all in that people are using this, that there's a demand. We want to make sure we understand the costs associated with it and the maintenance. But we're going to be taking that data, looking at it and seeing if it makes sense to expand to different locations there. We are also looking at how we can electrify our bus fleet. We have Palm Tran, as you all know, and we've developed a new facility, our South County Facility for Palm Tran, where they said, you know what, we don't have the buses yet, but they're coming. We're getting those. We're going to make the infrastructure to prepare for those buses so that we can start electrifying our fleet. So they put in twenty E V charging stations and they're acquiring seven buses within the next few years, continuing to look at grant money out there to see if we can add more to that, that, that fleet. And then we're looking at code amendments too, one. In our private sector, we want to make sure that the market is getting ready for, for this technology. It's a lot easier to install infrastructure during new construction or substantial renovations rather than retrofitting and tearing out asphalt and, you know, messing with concrete later on. So you can save about anywhere from forty to ninety percent of costs by doing it during new construction, substantial renovations. So we're looking at whether we need to amend our uniform land development code to require new construction and substantial renovation for multifamily and office to start putting just the, just the conduit, you know, just the, the, the thing that, just the infrastructure that will connect the wires later and making the space for it now, not necessarily adding all the charging equipment, you know, at this moment. So being able to meet the market when it, when it deems suitable. Next slide. Related to climate change adaptation and making sure we're ready to deal with flooding and extreme heat and sunny day flooding, you know, all of, all of those aspects we talked about earlier. We are doing simple things like making sure our street sweeping equipment works well and making sure that our stormwater infrastructure is functioning as it should be. The slide at the top shows our, our miles of streets swept every year and we've invested in, in staff power and new technology there to increase that and, and make sure that things are functioning because if those systems are blocked, then we don't, our, our water drainage system is impacted and people's homes flood. They can't get to work. I mean, all those things come up. So we start, you know, with the basics, making sure what we have works. We're also looking at how we can improve our county capital construction planning. We've developed this manual that formalizes this best practice of as we are spending money to build a bridge or put a new building in, in place. We want to make sure that we're thinking about energy efficiency. We're thinking about potential sea level rise and what that would mean. I mean, if, if we had to create a new emergency operations center, do we want to be planning for two feet of sea level rise if it's going to last fifty years and, and needs to be something that everyone can access? So it's, the manual that we have is not requiring anyone to actually make any cost additions or, or actually, you know, it doesn't dictate a construction method, but it's saying at least consider and know what the information is saying and then figure out what you need to do to accommodate that or, you know, you, you as project manager will balance those interests and make an informed decision. So that's how we're approaching our capital planning right now. Next slide. I want to highlight this coastal resilience partnership of Southeast Palm Beach County where we worked with seven other cities. Not because I think Juneau Beach is in this area. I know where we are geographically, but because it's a model of how, how smaller cities partnered with larger cities and the county to, to capitalize on staff support that these larger cities provide. So Boca Raton, Delray Beach, Boynton Beach have dedicated sustainability specialists. I'm a dedicated resiliency and sustainability specialist. So by, and maybe Town of Ocean Ridge or, let's see Highland Beach, they don't have that dedicated staff, right? So it's for them to undertake this project where we wanted to have a climate change vulnerability assessment done. It would have been a big lift for Ocean Ridge or Highland Beach to do that on their own. They didn't have that staff person, but by partnering together and by this region recognizing, we all need this climate change vulnerability assessment. It's going to help us prioritize our resources. We just, we just know we have issues, but how, where do we spend our money first and how do we know which neighborhood to prioritize? That's what the climate change vulnerability assessment helped us do. And by partnering together, we were able to avoid duplication of efforts and, and share those resources there. So on the next slide, it will show an example of what a vulnerability assessment can, can display. On the right is that segment, that scope of work again. And this is for an example of rainfall-induced flooding. And you can very easily say, okay, along the coast, the darker colors are areas where the exposure and the risk is higher. We need to be thinking about those areas first. Oh, and you know, oh, good. We have some areas that are not so vulnerable. So it helps, it make it easy, helps. You can share this with your staff. You can share this with your planning teams and your consultants to say, now let's ground truth and make sure that these areas that were indicated as being susceptible to rainfall-induced flooding is actual, you know, and so you just have that baseline information. The other reason to mention a climate change vulnerability assessment is because this is becoming a prerequisite for funding. The state with its resilient Florida legislation says to qualify for infrastructure dollars through that specific program, you need to have that project identified in a vulnerability assessment that the state deems appropriate. So this is becoming a barrier to entry. Well, a prerequisite to entry, I, I should say, and it's becoming standard practice on, on what, what I've seen cities do to make sure that they are at, you know, at a good starting point. There is funding available to offset the costs of these vulnerability assessments. So there are planning dollars, which is a good thing. We, for this one partnership between the eight, I think the costs were just under four hundred thousand dollars. We got about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from D E P at two different grant times. So, and then everyone kind of chipped in. So that's the other benefit of doing this collective project. Next slide. So moving on to the overall sustainable development, sustainability projects. We've been working on living shorelines for quite a while with our, our armed department. And that's the picture on the bottom right where we deal with wave attenuation and erosion by creating habitats and this green infrastructure. We have our Green Kay Nature Center, which is an example of how you can solve an infrastructure challenge of dealing with wastewater by reclaiming that water and using it to combine with the wetlands and create this community amenity. That's a tourist attraction too, and just a wonderful place to be. Our Parks Department as well is undergoing a re-greening plan where they're looking at their tree canopy and what kind of vegetation they have and looking at how they can change or add more native canopy and figure out how to do kind of like, you know, low, low water, right tree, right place type improvements. We're also looking at how we can reduce our single-use plastic waste and going back to the board early in 2022 to talk about what kind of options there are from styrofoam to balloons and confetti and straws and everything, you know, in between. Next slide. So because of all this work, we've gotten a few certifications and awards. The Florida Green Building Coalition and the Lead Gold, they rate cities on their overall sustainability. It also looks at things like quality of life and, and, and demographic issues. But it looks at our greenhouse gas emissions per capita and how well we manage our waste and what kind of water conservation efforts we're undertaking. The Soul Smart Gold designation means that it's, we make it easier for homeowners to install solar and businesses to install solar. We got gold designation by reducing the permitting time for solar. So it used to take, I don't know, a couple of weeks and we got it to three-day turnaround, which people really like. If you've ever had to go to the building department and try to get a permit. So that's, that's a good thing. Next slide. Our rating agencies are also taking note and looking very hard at what we're doing in the resiliency space. In 2019, when S and P Global was reevaluating us, they came, they interviewed me, they interviewed staff and as part of their, you know, eight-page report that said, you all get the highest bond rating possible. They included a statement that says in part because of the resiliency efforts that we're taking. So that right there made our budget office, like they became, they loved the Office of Resilience at that point, right? Because it, it translates to real dollar savings for the county. It's an economic advantage to have that higher bond rating and, and increase our, our financial undertake, you know, value for when we're issuing bonds. Next slide. So there's still a lot more to do on our plates. This list is just an example to show a sense of scale of the projects that we're still applying for. The first bucket is projects we recently got awards. Well, the award letter for, it's a reimbursable grant through Department of Economic Opportunity. They have this Rebuild Florida program with this C D B G mitigation funds, which are passed through from HUD. But millions of dollars available to do capital infrastructure projects for resiliency efforts. And by resiliency, that includes making sure lift stations work and making sure that you, your infrastructure is working properly. So it, it might, it overlaps often with what your, what infrastructure departments are already thinking is on their list of things to do, right? And then the bottom category, we have pending applications out, you know, another fifty million dollars or so, forty-five, you know, so there's, there's just a lot of funding available. But a lot of funding needs too. So this is the time to start putting your projects together and going for these grants because the, the dollars have started to really, to really be there. Next slide. One of the projects that we got an award for was this vulnerability assessment and resilience action plan. The Office of Resilience is, is leading this effort here for an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to focus on flooding, wildfires and create that similar vulnerability assessment, which we showed you an example of a few slides back. That's going to be just for unincorporated Palm Beach County and the Western communities. But we're going to take that information and use everything we know that exists in Palm Beach County and create a resilience action plan that will be countywide. So we're hoping to work and get community input from, from all of our municipalities and our stakeholders in Palm Beach County. Next slide. Now I'm going to shift into resources and by resources, it's more, you know, technical, technical resources rather than financial for this section. I'll start with the South Florida Regional Climate Change Compact. It's a four-county partnership. We've been working on for over a decade with Monroe, Miami, Broward. The point is we wanted to collectively address climate change issues that don't respect, you know, jurisdictional boundaries. It's here. We're all dealing with the same thing or similar things. And when we join together and, and advocate for improvements, you know, it's a lot more powerful to be coming from this region, saying this is good for all of Southeast Florida. We put together joint policy legislation platforms every year at the state for state and federal agendas. We host annual We host annual summits. We host implementation workshops to try and help cities and our, and our counties figure out how to assess the data, assess what the research is telling us, and then create implementable solutions. This past Monday, we had one on extreme heat and we had a four hour workshop with scientists and planners telling us about what the challenges are, how that's going to affect our tourism and outdoor workers and our construction industry. And then what we can do to, to help mitigate that and to start preparing our, our healthcare community for these kinds of impacts and what we can do with our land planning. So that's an example of one of the types of areas we would, we would focus on. Next slide. Oh, and I'll also mention the, we recently created a city survey to figure out of the 110 or so municipalities within this compact and the four counties, we wanted to see what everyone was doing. So we created the survey. We invited municipalities to participate and describe what kind of mitigation or adaptation work they're doing. And so that's going to be a really interesting resource to see what our peers are doing and what we can learn from within that, you know, from that output. So stay tuned for us sharing those results. One of the other things the compact does is create, we created this regional climate action plan. The cover photo is on the screen here. We wanted to give people a starting point. So if our municipalities or the county, if we're just starting out and saying, what should we do to deal with resiliency or sustainability? This is a guide that has different sectors. So if you're interested in energy, for example, you turn to that chapter and it has some guiding principles on things you can focus on. Same with, so transportation, economic resilience and working with our business community. So it's a good, it's a useful starting point. And we're working on updating that in the coming year to make sure it's still the latest and greatest information. Next slide. Through the compact, we also wanted to answer that question of, oh my goodness, this is all so expensive, is it worth it? We worked with the Urban Land Institute and some other partners to commission a study to say, what exactly does it cost for the adaptation? You'll hear headlines in the newspapers of various costs, but we wanted to see, you know, can we make some general statements? And the study found that when we're talking about building level adaptation, so maybe that's floodproofing or dry proofing that building. For every dollar you invest, you get $4 back. When we're talking about community wide, so maybe that's septic to sewer conversion or, or beach renourishment, for every dollar you invest, you get $2 back. But you also see billions of dollars in economic benefits and job creation. Next slide. So then shifting over to what we've seen other municipalities do with, related to sustainability. That is not my soundtrack. But, uh, there are other initiatives, no, not all, all of these things listed here, Palm Beach County is not necessarily doing, but just helpful to think about what we've seen others take part in from doing benchmarking policies. Some cities are saying every building above 50,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet has to report on their energy and water consumption. We've seen a big push on race to zero campaigns, especially with the international climate action that's happening right now. So cities are saying, I will, we will be net zero by 2050, which means everything we're consuming, we're going to offset. And basically you get there by electrifying your fleet, electrifying everything, putting, you know, renewable energy where possible and doing carbon offsetting, carbon sequestration. So it's, it's pretty ambitious and we're seeing a lot of people, you know, make that commitment and, and just think about 30 years from now, you know, what, what would the world look like? And people are, are, are ready for it. We think we've seen, I mentioned climate change vulnerability assessments, single use plastic, EV, and then looking at those funding opportunities at DEP, DEO from the state, and then also FEMA, brick funding, that's another thing we've been looking at. So we have lots of infrastructure type funding available. Next slide. This is a graphic from the climate vulnerability assessment that we put together. And I think the image is, maybe it's a little weird, but, um, the, it's just different options of what cities and municipalities can think about in regional planning from looking at septic to sewer to beach renourishment to development standards. So when we're talking about community wide options, what does that mean? This is a range of what we can, we can look at. Next slide. I'll, I'll pivot back to how the Office of Resilience is, can support other, you know, our peers and, and be a resource for our, our community. I'll start with saying we are a small team of three people and responsible for county operations as well as advancing sustainability and resiliency within the community and working with our, our partners. We do, we are always available to talk to our peers and, and share lessons learned, you know, provide scopes of work that we've worked on or experiences or methodologies and, and be a resource there. We have gone through electric vehicle infrastructure contracts and greenhouse gas inventories. We can share our inventories with our other cities and it might be able, you know, you might be able to take data and apply that to your own jurisdiction. We, a lot of our work is through the climate compact. We developed the Unified Sea Level Rise Projection or the, the R cap 2.0 that I mentioned. So we're working on resources. We know kind of what's out there and, and can, you know, are happy to share our experiences. We also have collaborated on potential projects and we've provided letters of support for our, our peers to go for grant applications as well. So that's kind of a suite of options. And at the same time, you know, we, we have seen just how much it takes to continue and to, to lead sustainability and resiliency efforts. It, it takes, you know, our constant attention all the time on, on these efforts. And it, it's taken our, we've had great elected official leadership and county administration leadership. And it's not just the three of us. It's, it's our environmental department director. It's our engineering director. It's, you know, our water utilities director. I mean, it's just, we have a great, these, these, uh, these departments are now seeing this as part of their job duties and job descriptions and, and know that it's, it's part of maintaining that level of service that people rely upon us to provide. So it's, it's not just us, but we are, we support them. And we try to continue to champion that work. And then, you know, with our, with our municipalities, we've seen that investment too. And having that dedicated staff to provide that resource, because it's, it's a lot of work to make sure you're paying attention to what, what is out there, you're incorporating things into business processes, you're applying for funding. So it's a, it's a shared commitment beyond just the Office of Resilience. So I will end with that, well, I'll almost end with that. The next slide, I'll just plug. We have a climate compact leadership summit that we, Palm Beach County is hosting on behalf of the Southeast Florida Climate Compact. It's a $75 ticket, but it's free for students. So if you have high school and, you know, college students that you think would be interested in attending, please feel free to circulate it to them. We're going to have a great panel lineup. We have our mayors and our admins from the region talking. We have people from the federal administration coming and from the state as well. So it'll be a really strong lineup and the whole theme is seizing the moment together. There's a sense of urgency now, but there's also this realization that it's cross sector. It's not just this weird thing that's a stand, well, one off, but it's part of how we think about transportation and affordable housing or, you know, community amenities. So it's a, it's a, there's a cross sector focus. So hopefully you might be interested in attending. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. I've got a quick question for you. I've heard for the last six, seven years, I've served as the, the town's representative on the Palm Beach County Water Resource Task Force. And one of the main issues that we deal with in those meetings is that the, the water, whether it's the ocean or, or other issues from Lake Okeechobee doesn't recognize municipal borders. And, and you've brought that up. You, you mentioned the climate change vulnerability assessment. And, and when you reference the, the costs, they would obviously be substantial for, for a small town budget like ours. But you also mentioned that you've had experience where more than one municipality will coordinate with, with another. Who would you see as a natural partnership or coordinating municipality with Juno Beach and that?
Yeah, it's, I'd have to admit, I'm less familiar with kind of North County, where everyone is right now in their planning efforts. So when we were meeting informally in the Southeast, everyone was saying, we know this is important, but we don't have anything yet developed. So I'm not sure what, you know, what Jupiter has, what they've done yet or what North Palm has done. So I think, you know, how, I think an easy way to, to see is to have, to ask and to get the planning staff together and, and see where everyone's at. The county is part of the reason why we were part of the Southeast Palm Beach County partnership. We had a very small, unincorporated territory. I think we were comparatively like briny breeze size, you know, with our geography. We wanted to get involved, so we knew the learning process. We could develop that methodology and be a partner if another, you know, if another municipal cohort wanted to form and we can bring that knowledge into that partnership and say, you know, yes, but let's, let's do it. Let's go for grants again. Let's offset costs and, and start to, to expand, you know, and to do another cohort. So I would have to, if somebody, you know, I don't know Jupiter's, I'm just using them as a hypothetical, but if they have a robust vulnerability assessment that they've already done, they're not going to want to duplicate efforts. So it's, you know, who's in your coastal region, who hasn't done something yet and who is interested and will be along for the ride for the two years, three years that it takes to, to get this, to get this done. Who can you partner with that might have more staff capacity? Or, you know, has those, has those sustainability specialists on, or has a planner or somebody from public works that can kind of be that, you know, that, that point person. So that's what I would say on that.
Thank you. Other questions for Megan?
Jim, do you want to go next? Okay.
Hi, Megan, thank you so much for coming. I appreciate it. I had reached out to Megan several months ago and asked if she would be willing to do a presentation like this because I wanted council and our residents to see the types of things that other municipalities are doing and the efforts that the county is making in this direction. My ultimate hope is that perhaps we can start to incorporate some of these things, the energy savings, like this town center is going to need renovation and updating. And perhaps there's better ways to do the HVAC system and, you know, add some solar and, you know, use some of these other natural resources, you know, to help. So that was my point. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Megan. I had Bob Hamilton send me an article. It was quite interesting on being proactive in the decarbonization of buildings. I'm just curious if the county has taken any action on decarbonization of buildings, either current or in future buildings that are being built.
So we, you know, we start with reducing the, the demand of what the existing buildings are currently using. So, you know, trying to increase that energy efficiency. We've done some limited solar installations with our wastewater infrastructure. We have a solar installation there and we have one, I believe with Mountains Botanical Garden. And then we have our wastewater utility department. One of their accounts is connected with the FPL Solar Together Program. So that means that we've, you know, kind of rented out a solar panel or set of solar panels at their farm and, and that's offsetting. So it's, I would say it's, it's starting, but we don't have, I don't, I don't believe we have a formal decarbonization strategy. It is something we're, we are looking at. And in that resilience action plan, you know, we're going to be looking at what kind of strategies exist and what the cost would be and what, what is feasible.
I think, yeah.
Sure.
Does the county have plans to put in charging stations throughout the county? Or are they going to require large developers and developments to, to put in charging stations or?
Yeah, so we're in this pilot program right now where we're looking at county facilities, what we already own. We're looking at, we just put it in at the governmental center, which is our headquarters. We put in six chargers. We're looking at the Vista Center, which is off of Okeechobee, near the Turnpike. We're looking at a couple of other locations. So within our own facilities, we want to make sure that people will use it. We're testing how it works and how the contracts work. Related to, you know, overall Palm Beach County planning, you know, we would, we would want to roll out something that is geographically appropriate and equitable. I mean, we have our, our libraries and our parks, you know, scattered throughout. So it's, we haven't developed, we're in the pilot process to see how and where and by how much we would like to expand our charging infrastructure. At the same time, you know, the state FPL, the private sector is also increasing their charging infrastructure and, and, and putting these in. So I think it'll be a, a private market, public market solution. And then we are looking at requiring multifamily and commercial office, new and substantial renovation, construction to, in, to build in the infrastructure, but not the actual chargers.
Thank you.
Sure.
Wayne?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. We'll move on to comments from the public.
Nancy Lodes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nancy Lodes, I represent the Pleasant Ridge neighborhood. And recently I, I sent to the town or prepared by our Pleasant Ridge team a minimal impact proposal in regard to the Waterford redevelopment. And I respectfully ask for your consideration of our plan. Unfortunately, I do, I don't have the plan to share with each of you, but I have the pros and cons that I will leave for, for you. But basically, you know, we, we feel, which this was inspired by, by trying to keep the native trees that exist on the Pleasant Ridge properties, particularly a huge native banyan tree. I don't know if, if any of you have seen, seen this tree in our neighborhood and the kids saved up their allowance and they bought a little swing for it. It's a very beloved tree. And, you know, we're, our team really would like to have a solution. This is a very long ongoing situation for 20 plus years now. And we've, you know, we put together a very comprehensive plan. Joe has seen it. It's, maybe some of you have seen it already. One of our team members and, and that lives in Pleasant Ridge is very good with graphics and is a surveyor by trade. So, you know, we, we feel this is a very comprehensive and thoughtful plan. And we would, you know, ask respectfully for your consideration as the Waterford continues to, to move forward. We have been working with them. I'll, I'll leave the pros and cons and for, for you. And you can access the plan through Joe. And any questions, guys know where to find me. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
John Calligan.
John Calligan, 24 Grand Bay Circle, Juneau Beach. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council Members. As you know, I filed for reelection to the Town Council and I'm looking forward to a civil and ethical campaign and airing out of the various issues facing our town. I intend to seek the support of as many Juneau Beach voters as possible, as well as local elected officials such as yourselves. I'd also like to wish Alex Cook good luck and I wish him well with his campaign, along with any others that may join this competition before the filing deadline. Thank you.
Stuart Katz.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak freely. First, before I begin, I want to endorse Mr. Calligan's comments and I look forward to a pleasant, traditional Juneau Beach campaign. It'll be a pleasant change from the last one. Okay, Stuart Katz, 900 Ocean Drive. During my recent three years on this council, I valued ethics and transparency. In medicine, we were taught ethics is easy to assess. If something smells bad, it usually is. So there came two or three occasions when I felt that Mayor Hasselcorn failed my test. This is one of those occasions. Mr. Hasselcorn seeks to portray himself as a victim of a personal attack while at the same time he has tried to neutralize my allegations by portraying me as unstable. This is absolutely not the case. This is not some personal dispute. My concerns raise the question of whether Mayor Hasselcorn should be removed from office or recalled by the people. My concern is for the best interests of Juneau Beach. At the most recent Town Council meeting, I denounced Mayor Jason Hasselcorn for attempting to utilize the Juneau Beach Police Force to investigate his claims that I harassed and intimidated him at the July 2nd, 2021 Mayor's Hour event. Mayor Hasselcorn opened a formal incident investigation report. The police saw no basis for his allegations and filed case number 21189 away with the comment, nothing further. My most serious charge was that Mayor Hasselcorn filed a false sworn statement. A false sworn witness statement. He quote swore or affirmed that his statements are true and correct under penalty of law. Mayor Hasselcorn's mean spirited statement.
Dr. Katz, your, your time's up.
Yes, I'm going to request that I be allowed to continue because here I am talking about Mayor Hasselcorn repressing a member of the public.
Well, you know.
I'd say the optics of this look terrible. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm just saying your two minutes are up.
Mr. Hasselcorn, your decision.
Yeah, I, your two minutes are up, Stu. It's not fair to other folks.
All right. Very good. So let me tell you that.
Now, this is the second time you've tried to attack me personally.
Jason?
Stuart. This is the second time you've tried to attack me personally using public comments. You know that the policy is that we don't respond to public comments. You're taking advantage of the process. You, you've never been one for honesty and accuracy.
Oh, wait a second, Jason. Jason, please retract that. Mister, I asked that that be retracted.
I'm going to ask you to stop interfering with the meeting. I'm going to ask you to refrain from personal attacks. That's not what.
This is not a personal attack.
It most certainly is.
Mr. Hasselcorn, I'm going to submit the full text of my comment. It will be published along with the remainder of the consent agenda. And one second, please, I have the microphone.
I'm, I'm two minutes.
Your two minutes are up. Thank you kindly. I appreciate your courtesy.
Steve Allen.
Hi, uh, Steve Allen, 451 Olympus Drive. On a lighter note, um, I've lived, I've lived in Juneau Beach for 14 years and I've walked around the lake for 12 years, about 300 times a year. So that makes it 3,600 times I've walked around the lake with my dog, Dolly. Uh, while not being a biologist, I am an observer of the vegetation and wildlife at the lake. And I've seen what chemicals have done to the lake a few years ago, killing all the vegetation, making the birds leave and decimating the wildlife. It's obvious that a natural ecological approach to use, uh, to restore the lake would be the way to go. The large and expensive companies that, uh, I looked at, that the Town Council was considering, they're, they're really dealing with pesticides and fertilizers and water quality, which is not our problem. Our problem is restoring the lake to its natural, uh, the way it is. Um, I urge the council to put up, forbid the environmental consultant for the consultant and not just make a decision on it like that. Um, one last thing, I don't know about item seven on your agenda, but Dolly, my dog, asked me to speak for her and she says if it's allowing dogs on the beach on a leash, she's all for it.
Beverly Gibble.
Gibble? Didn't think you'd be of service. Um, I reside at 451 Olympus Drive and I'll be very brief. Um, as has been discussed and known, there's been considerable controversy about the condition of our beloved Pelican Lake. And as the crown jewel, jewel of our town, uh, it's important and its importance and health cannot be overstated. Um, I'm just registering my, my opinion, uh, that we need to seek and employ professionals who are experts in the management of the total ecosystem and not just either one facet being the water or the floor or the fauna, uh, but the whole balance and a holistic approach, in my opinion, is, um, to use only natural, natural approaches and, uh, nothing to do with, uh, artificial or toxic chemicals. And I recently become involved with the, um, Juneau Beach Ecological, um, Group. And I'm really impressed with their dedication, the diligence with which they research things. And, um, I, you can't ask for a better group. And I urge you to respect and, and adhere to some of their recommendations. I think we're very lucky to have that group. Um, and, um, the, the name of Sean Patton seems to have come up quite a bit as one of the most qualified, dedicated and experienced people. And he seems to be a great candidate for the management of our lake. So, thank you.
Bob Hamilton.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Bob Hamilton, 220 Celestial Way. The subject matter is, uh, 230 Celestial Way, um, their, um, their, their pool. Uh, I'd like to hand this out. Uh, this is a Palm Beach County, uh, PPM, um, ordinance. Can I, thank you, Joe. Uh, as you are aware, I was a proud member of our Juneau Beach Planning and Zoning. I was one of the members in Planning and Zoning that approved the pool revision. And during the course of the last four months, the owners of 2230 Celestial Way have not followed the code and the life safety issues that have recruited themselves, um, by not having a fence that is required by code. 24 hours a day, there is no fence surrounding the 360 of this pool. And this is a life safety issue. And there's nothing more important than following the code. If you look at, uh, item A, one and two, I don't want to get into the details, but it's all there. And, uh, section D, it talks about what must be followed. Here's my biggest complaint besides 230. I have spoken to staff about this over the last three months. I have sent a verb, I spoke to them verbally and I have spoken, I have, I have written emails with no response. That's not acceptable when it comes to life safety. I can call the chief in 30 seconds, get a response. On November 2nd, I spent the, I sent an email to Joe, Joe Lobello. Joe, good morning. Last Friday, it was reported in Juneau Beach Weekly that I had been complaining about the lack of fencing required by code. I have been communicating verbally and by email to staff that this has been a life safety issue since occupancy, not a complaint. There is, the, the, the four foot tents surrounding this pool is only 50% erected. As a former PNZ member who approved variants for this new pool, a 360 fences required, I request the life safety issue be resolved immediately. And I also want the Juneau Beach Weekend Report to properly state the fact correctly that I was not complaining. Response from Joe Lobello, thank you for your email. I will check into the status of this issue. That was the same date. To date, I have not received anything from the town management. This is not acceptable. Life safety issues are the prime response of our community members and everybody here. Any comments?
It's not our policy to comment on public comments.
Okay, these people need to be spoken to.
Your, your time is up, Mr. Hamilton. Thank you. You've brought it to our attention. We'll ask.
I just want to say one thing. As we speak right now, that pool is not secured. Thank you.
Anne Bosso.
Anne Bosso, 765 Hibiscus Avenue. Just so happens that I have two things, one of which Bob was just saying. Bosso and I were going to dinner, we're walking to the Key Grill. There was a rut in the side of, right in front of the manor by the bicycle path. I called town and told them that it was dangerous. A bike could very, very easily go into this rut and flip. Next thing you know, the activity report says Anne Bosso called to complain. It isn't a complaint. When a citizen of this town calls to make a recommendation on a safety issue, it's not appreciated and it shouldn't be issued as a complaint in the activity report. That's number one. Number two is the environment, is the lake. The lake is our downtown. It's where everybody walks, where they gather, where they're neat. No one on this council and including, and I'm not on the council, but no one, very few people in this audience are qualified to, on an environmental issues. When a, a group of concerned citizens who are using their time, expertise, everything else to try to save this lake for the rest of the citizens, they're shot down continually. It's really disgraceful. Everyone up at Yalta should be ashamed of yourselves who do not support that ecology group.
I received no further public comments, only for other items on the agenda.
Hey, do any other members of the public wish to be heard on any matter not on the agenda this evening? All right, there being none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. You have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, next item, uh, after the, uh, change that was requested, we have discussion on amending the town code regarding animal, regarding animals in parks and dogs on the beach per the request of Councilmember Halper. Edie?
Yeah, hi. I put this item on the agenda, um, after seeing in the police report that there was an incident. It was labeled as a dog bite, but it seems more like, uh, somebody was scratched by somebody's dog on the beach. Um, I don't know the details of the case. However, I have, um, since taking this position on council, received complaints from residents about dogs on the beach in general and also, um, people on the beach recreating, um, you know, sunbathing and being approached by dogs. So it's a continual problem. It seems to happen particularly during season when perhaps people unfamiliar with the town's code are coming here, um, assuming that it's dog friendly as Jupiter's beach is. So having the item on the agenda for council discussion is for the purpose of facilitating conflict resolution on our beaches and ensuring a safe and peaceful beach experience for all. Um, in speaking to Lynn about the code, I, and looking at the code myself, I noticed that we have a no animals in parks rule, but we do not have a no dogs on the beach rule, but yet we do allow dogs in the parks. So, um, I'm asking council tonight to discuss, um, potentially eliminating the section 1842 that says dogs aren't allowed in parks. So dogs are allowed and continue to be allowed in, uh, Pelican Lake Park, for instance, and creating a, a separate no dogs on the beach ordinance, which would help with enforcement and, um, our signage, which right now just says no animals. Um, so I think people don't really take notice of that and those signs that just have a turtle logo sticker on it, not a dog. So I think those signs are easily missed. So anyway, um, it's up for discussion.
Would like to start us off. Any public comments on this? Let's, let's start there, Caitlin.
Yes, Mr. John Staluto.
John Staluto, 401 Sunset Way. Uh, thank you, council, mayor, manager. Okay. Uh, I was going to come up here and bark like a dog and scare the hell out of all you, but my wife talked me out of it. But I've been here for 34 years and I've had a lot of encounters with dogs. But I'm going to tell you the worst one I had. Okay. It was down in front of Seminole, the golf course, not past Seminole, was in our property. And I was walking down there and all I had on was a bathing suit, nothing else. No shirt, no shoes, nothing. And I'm walking and I see a girl down on the beach. Now, the, the beach had been eroded, so there were big rocks. Sometimes they're there, sometimes they're not. So her dog was down there with her and I didn't think anything of it. I'm walking up top. Next thing, this dog comes running around and it looked like a pit bull, but I don't know if it was a mix or whatever it was. And he came right at me. Now, what would you do? You're almost naked on the beach and you have this vicious dog coming right at you. Well, I remember when I was a little kid, I was a patrol boy and I used to have to walk home and deal with dogs. And I would always fake them out. The dog would come up, I'd make believe I have a rock and I could get back. So that's what I did on this beach. This dog started coming at me. There was no place to run. I couldn't get to the water because of the rocks. I couldn't go run up into the seagrave. My wife was behind me. Luckily I didn't have a child with me and this dog came right at me. So I just said, get back. And I went the rock and I did, get back, get back. And the dog kept coming at me and I kept going back, get back, get back. My wife couldn't believe how fast I could move. I was 70 pounds heavier than I am now and I was moving like a ballerina, okay? And I kept yelling to her, get your dog, get your dog. And I was so close to being bit by that dog. And if he had gotten a hold of me, I don't know what I would have did. What would I have done? I would have went down in the sand. Nobody, I helped you. This dog would have chewed me to death. I had no weapon. I had no nothing. I don't want anyone to have to go through that. Okay. So now, when I go to the beach and especially if I go to that end, I carry this, okay? I carry a, a stick or even a pocket knife. People shouldn't have to do that. Our beaches need to be controlled regularly. Last week I went to go down the middle and I saw a girl on the beach there with a big white dog and he was running loose back and forth. So I turned around and went back because I knew the dog would probably come at me. If I was a dog, I'd run too, you know, if you saw me coming at you. I don't know. But, uh, anyhow, please don't allow dogs on the beach. The dogs around the lake are great. I pet many of them. Every day we walk the lake. Dogs are great, but on the beach, people let dogs go. They don't control them. It's very dangerous. Thank you.
Gladys Fundora, would you like me to read it? You can come up.
I need one of those horns, Jim.
I need one of those horns, Jim.
Good evening. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Council. I, I want to echo your, your sentiments exactly because I've had a similar experience, not quite as drastic, you know, but, but it is frightful and you have, you have nowhere to go and, you know, no one to seek help and so forth. So I, I echo your, your response as well. And, you know, and then who's to say that this couldn't happen in a park? I was just reading in the magazine that's provided outside. I understand that dogs aren't allowed in public parks in Palm Beach County. So I just wonder where our, you know, where Palm Beach County policy and our policies perhaps coincide or don't coincide, and perhaps that may be an issue. But who's to say that couldn't happen in a park as well? So just for public safety, I love animals. Yes, we all do, but just for public safety, I think it's, it's something we need to be concerned about because it's nice to be out on the beach and not have to worry about, you know, an incident as, as the gentleman just described. And thank you. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
No further comments for this item.
Does any other member of the public wish to be heard on this item? Okay, there being none, council comments, discussion? Oh, sure, go ahead.
I would, Diana Davis, four forty Sunset Way. I would like to speak on behalf of dogs and re, and chastise the owners who don't keep their dogs on the leash, but because they ruin it for everyone else. But I think it would be great if dogs were allowed, continually allow dogs in the park and also allow dogs on the beach, but do require the owners to maintain the leashes and to control their dogs. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? All right, discussion from council members. Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Is there a letter? There was supposed to be a letter, yeah.
From who?
Marion.
Are you Gerald? Is that Gerald? Yeah. Talk to him on the phone.
I have one from Shapiro, but for item number six.
I'll paraphrase it. Marion did call me last night and, and her comment was that with respect to Kagan Park, she, her, her strong preference for quality of life reasons was to, to not make it a dog park. Is there anything you'd like to add to that as, as far as you're aware, or does that summarize it well enough? Yes, you want to be heard on this? Please come up to the microphone.
Claire Cohn, twenty celestial way. I just would like to add that Juno Beach is one of the premier loggerhead turtle, you know, nesting and birthing places. And so the notion of having dogs on the, on the beach would be one that we would oppose for those reasons. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, go ahead. We, the microphone and name and address.
Beverly Guy Bell, four fifty-one Olympus Drive. I'm a dog liker, but I'm not a dog lover. I'm skittish around strange dogs and, and much as we'd like to believe that people will be responsible, you know, the recent history proves and experience proves that some people are not. And there's a nice dog park in Jupiter. If for the dog lovers, just go up there. I'm really opposed to dogs on our beaches in Juno.
Anyone else? All right, council discussion.
Elaine, you can.
So maybe you could help me on this. So it says that no owner shall permit cat, dog at any public park unless dog, cat is on a leash. So.
Okay, that's in the dog and cat chapter, but in the park chapter, it specifically says that animals are not allowed in the parks with the exception of guide dogs and service dogs. So I, you could read that to mean that if you have a guide dog, service dog, of course, they're always on a leash, but that they'd have to be on a leash, um, you know, there, that's maybe a little contradictory, but as it stands right now, there are no animals allowed in the parks and the definition of parks includes the beach area. You know, Pelican Lake, it's a sidewalk. I, you know, I don't know if that's considered a park or not. I don't know if we.
It's dedicated as a park.
So it is dedicated as a park.
Yes.
So, but yeah, that's, as it stands now, they're not permitted.
And our codes don't distinguish between a beach and a park. I, I, looking at what some other towns have, they, they distinguish beaches, beach and park is park, which makes establishing a code or ordinance.
Yeah, our, our code says park means park, reservation, playground, beach, rec center.
My goal was to split those two apart and differentiate parks from beaches and create separate ordinances relative to each one.
Well, I, I think that maybe our language can get a little firmer or clear. I definitely, I have a dog, I own a dog, love dogs and all animals. That being said, I do not want to see them permitted on the beach. Or, you know, to be like, if you're walking around the lake, so maybe we got to clarify Pelican Lake should not be a park. We walk them on the sidewalk. So many do every morning, every afternoon, after evening. I enjoy doing that with my dog. I don't want to ever take that away. But in Kagan Park where there's children playing, I don't think it's appropriate to have a dog there. But on the beach, I agree, I don't, you know, so I don't know if we change the language to help us with that, if everyone's leaning that way. And as far as new signs and all that go or additional signs, I don't want to litter our town with more signs. So let's try and figure that out as well and.
I think one of the reasons that our beach is less crowded probably is because people aren't allowed to bring their dogs on our beach and that probably takes them to Jupiter and some of the other beaches in town. I think that the wording is very awkward and I think if we, we, one thing we could do is correct this and, and make it more understandable. Uh, I'm on the board of Big Dog Ranch Rescue, so it's very difficult because I love dogs and I obviously do a lot for the dogs. But I think in this situation, it's, it's a, it's a tough decision because there's a lot of people that don't want dogs on the beach. And I don't think that at this point, changing that ordinance would be something I would be in favor of right now, but I would be open to bringing it back or actually taking a survey of everyone. I don't know if the majority of the people would say they prefer not to or they would, but I think, again, I always go back to this is, this is your town and this is something that the citizens need to make a decision on and, and really voice their opinion on. So. I'm done.
I learned something new tonight. I did not know Pelican Lake was a park. I just felt it was a lake walk and I think we, we need to change that. And every day, people walk dogs around Pelican Lake, including myself. And, uh, but to allow dogs in our parks is a mistake. Not all dogs are people friendly. And Kagan Park is a playground. It's a playground for children. And I don't want parents to think that their child's out there running in the grass and having fun and he falls, he's gonna fall in dog poop. And so I think we need to rewrite it where it's clarified and I, I don't support dogs on the beach. I'm a dog person. I love Dobermans, I have Dobermans and you know, and I love to take, take her on the beach, but I can't. But I do walk her around the lake. And if I want to go to the beach, I go to Jupiter. So, but I think we need to rewrite this where it's clarified and maybe we can have it for our next meeting, hopefully. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I've got a couple of comments. So I, I, I think we've got a couple different, at least, well, now three different issues. So let, let me start with the, the first one. I'm a, I'm, I, I was not aware that Pelican Lake had formal designation as a park, but I do have some concern about having a a knee jerk reaction because people are walking dogs around the the pathway that we would take that designation away. I, I, I believe that's one where we may find ourselves with unintended consequences. It's, uh, the, the definition of it being a park, I think we, we went into this in some detail with the old Town Hall Park and, and I think that it, there, there's a value to it being designated as a park space. Where it creates the problem is, is sort of the, the second level of issue, which is the, we've got some inconsistencies and some areas that are going to need clarification. I don't think they're easily tweaked or, or fixed. We've got multiple code sections that apply here. They're, they're in fairly broad terms and for that matter, I, I, I know, you know, I, I have walked a dog around Pelican Lake and apparently that is not permitted in town. I think many of us have.
I have.
I, I'm surprised to learn that, that, that somehow improper or, or inconsistent with our code because we have so many folks doing it and enjoying it. Some, it's part of their daily routine. I, I'd like to see those inconsistencies and, and areas clarified. And I don't know that it's something that's very easy. I think the staff and Len would have to work together. Let, let me shift to the, I'm gonna put these two things together. And the reason I mentioned the chief is because I, I think this really falls on the, the third category of issues is really an enforcement type issue. Right now, we've got code sections that really allow the discretion of our law enforcement and, and, and it seems like it's broad enough that they can do what they need to do in just about any circumstance, but to the extent that we've heard some examples where, you know, folks felt threatened or, or they didn't have the help they needed within you know, ready access, I, I think we need to have the chief involved and, and our, our law enforcement to see if there's anything different that we can do from an enforcement standpoint or patrol standpoint. I also know that the Marine Life Center sends patrols and they would certainly raise any issues and, and contact the town. If, if we're not, i- are we doing enough? Are we not doing enough? Do they not have the latitude that they need or the discretion that they need based on the code sections that we currently have? What would they recommend changing if they need more? And to the extent that we're talking about posting another sign without a turtle decal or, or something else, I think the folks that are, that are walking past the sign that says no animals allowed on the beach, they're, they're not going to stop because there's a second sign or because it says in, you're, you're doing this in violation of a, of a town code. So that's why I think from an enforcement standpoint, we, we would need to see, just, just make sure that, that our folks that are responsible for enforcing it have what they need. And then Len, I, I guess we defer to you and the, the, the staff together to really, how, how do we square these different code sections? And I, I, I can't imagine it's that difficult, but you do have a few moving parts.
Yes, there are a few moving parts. I mean, just sitting here thinking that you could allow them on the public sidewalks and that's it. So sort of carve that out to the extent that public, I didn't know public, like sidewalk was a park. I've walked my dog there too. We're all guilty. So perhaps that's one way to sort of carve out and allow on the public sidewalks, not, I'm not talking about the walkovers, just the, the sidewalks. Because you can walk in front of the old Town Hall Park around Pelican Lake and, but happen to meet at a staff level and sort of hash it out.
Does anybody else have any other suggestions or does that sound like our, our next step and hopefully?
So would the rest of you not be in favor of a separate ordinance of no dogs on the beach? You would keep it as no animals in the park and let the park extend to the beach? As that's what it currently is where the beach is considered a park. So that's all included, rather than having a separate beach ordinance.
Len, do you think we should have a separate beach ordinance? Does that clarify it better?
I don't, i- if you're, that's only if you were gonna have different rules for parks and beaches. But if you're going, if the council's wish is to continue to prohibit dogs and other animals on the parks and in the beaches, then I don't really think we need to split it up. But I think we do have to clarify the walkway issue for sure. And the conflict, that language in chapter four.
So I guess the goal of this is to help solve the beach problem. So if we're not changing the language to help solidify enforcement that way, and we're not gonna update the signs and the sign, old signs still say no animals on the beach, then what's our main solution for the problem of dogs on the beach and an increasing number of that occurrence?
I think that's where the, the suggestion that Len would work in coordination with Chief Smith and, and make sure from the chief's perspective that he's aware that there, 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 is there a need for additional patrols? It, it sounds like there could be. I, I certainly defer to, to his input on that. And also as Len is looking at changing any language, I would think he'd want to work with the chief to make sure the chief and, and his law enforcement department all, all have the discretion that they need to address any issues that have taken place in the past so that we've learned from past experience and, and then again, from, you know, whether it's a patrol issue, whether it's a monitoring issue, you know, we, we, we can find out more.
One of the patrol issues that I saw this summer was, even though the new police SUV does go slow along the beach, it was going back and forth along the beach. And it's during turtle nesting season. And you, you know, so I'm reluctant to increase patrol during the summer for that reason. There may be hatchlings that have strayed. They could be going over unmarked nests, even though Lagerhead Marine Life Center does mark a lot of nests, they don't mark all of them. They just can't statistically put in that many sticks, so they just don't. So the police patrol in that large vehicle could inadvertently be riding over nests. So I would check with Lagerhead Marine Life Center as far as, you know, that kind of enforcement during turtle season. I think that's a huge concern. So I was hoping to, I guess, get something a little bit more substantial in place. And again, it's multifaceted, so there, there are several different concerns there, but that, that's my main concern is, is increased patrol during turtle season, so.
Personally, I, I share the concern with you, Dee Dee. I, I just think that it's, i- if it's from an, a patrol standpoint, but you know, they're, they've, they've got a new vehicle, but at, at least now you've mentioned that, that's really not the, increasing vehicle patrols is not the way to do it. Is, you know, is foot traffic going to do it? Is there a different way to, to handle it? But those are things that also, again, from a, and a policy standpoint, that, that's where Len and the staff would come in in terms of clarifying what, what the rules are. And then as far as enforcing the rules, I think we, we would rely on our law enforcement and hopefully people would get the message, but.
Mayor, one, one thing we have is, we have a drone. So we could have the police officer operate the drone, the whole beach. If there's a problem, then they can notify another officer and go right there. And that would, I think that would help out tremendously.
That's resources that the police have that, you know, again, that's why, you know, I, I would defer to, to our law enforcement on that.
Right.
And perhaps the dog image on the sign. I don't know how many we have and what that would take and the cost of something like that. But would that be the dog image?
Well, that's what I thought. I mean, we have those turtle logo stickers and a lot of them are peeling. So, you know, when people look at those four signs on the post, I have it in the backup materials. It's really instantly forgotten. It just, it's another thing to read. There's no imagery. There's nothing to draw particular attention to it. You know, even if you replace the sticker with a fresh sticker, it's still a turtle and it's the town logo. It, it doesn't indicate dogs in any way.
Do you, Dee Dee, do you have a position one way or the other on this, whether you?
My, my preference is to do a dog ordinance related to the beach. I think it just calls it out and it would make it very definitive. It would be easier to enforce. You could say, you know, exception for service animals or, you know, there could be a definitive way to turn. I think animals in parks is just very vague and people are gonna shrug and keep going.
Well, I don't think anyone actually goes to our ordinance. They look at the signs. So maybe the, the dog image on the sign is a way to draw attention to it because everyone sees a dog on a sign.
And the signs are faded. I mean, they could use updating.
And maybe highlighting the amount of the fine potentially, but chief, you, can you add anything or?
Yes, just to clarify a couple of things. So we do get calls for dogs on the beach and we respond to them. Sometimes it's legitimate, it's always a legitimate call, obviously, but sometimes we check into it. There's dogs on the beach. We tell them. Most of the time people don't know. For some reason, a lot of people who come here don't live here under the impression this is a dog beach. So one suggestion I, I would have is because we've come across a lot of people who claim they thought that Juno Beach, and they're very nice about it, like, whoa, I'm sorry. I thought this was a dog beach. And then we tell them Jupiter is a dog beach and they say, oh, we're very sorry. And they take their dog and they leave. So one suggestion is somehow we advertise the fact that we're not a dog friendly beach, you know? You know, however we would do that, but people think we are. So that, that would cut. You know, however, we would do that, but people think we are. So that that would cut down a lot. And then sometimes there are people on the beach that are service animals, which we cannot ask to remove. But of course, they have to be on leashes, you know, like, no dog can be running free on the beach, so. Other than the beach, we really don't have a lot of problems. I don't remember getting any calls in the park. Technically, they're not supposed to be around Pelican Lake, but we already know from being here so long that nobody seems to mind that. But technically, they're not supposed to be around Pelican Lake because it's designated a park. So my suggestion would be if we're clarifying the ordinances, a beach, the park, the beach is already a park by the definition of the beach as a park. So if we just clarify that there's no dogs allowed on in a park, that would include the beach. And then, and you would know better than me, Len, but maybe designate, and I heard what you said, Mayor, about maybe unintended consequences of not having Pelican Lake be a park. Can we designate that as a dog friendly park, the exception to the rule?
I like the path idea.
You can, but I I think it's maybe just easier to allow it on the path, but.
The problem is that everybody's on the path.
Well, that's true. Then they're on the grass.
A lot of times they're not on the path.
Most of the time they're not on the path. But but again, that would leave that to your discretion and.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But you know, you always, again, when it's written in the law and it says it's a park, there's always somebody who's going to know the law pretty well.
Ten feet within the path, something like that.
Right, because the dogs obviously have to go off the path.
Like I said, I didn't know if you can make an exception to to say that, you know, dogs are not allowed in the parks except as designated.
I mean, if the council's pleasure to allow it, you know, around Pelican Lake, we could do that. I I just, you know, that's that's a policy decision. If that's what the council wishes or not, but as Joe said, it could be the path and immediately adjacent to the path and.
And on a leash.
Oh, yes, always on a leash.
Always on a leash.
Anything else, Joe? And and another thing, please help us. If you see a dog on the beach, call the police department non-emergency number and we will check into it. If they say it's a service dog, we can't do much. But at least we'll investigate it, so please call us.
A service dog isn't going to bother anybody, but they'll be on a leash.
And the clue is that most people who don't have service dogs let the dog off the leash because they're used to that. They go to Jupiter.
In Jupiter, nobody's on a leash, right?
So if you see it on a leash, there's always a decent chance that they're going to say it's a service dog. They don't have to prove.
Further discussion or?
So do we just bring this back at a next agenda for another council meeting?
If that gives Len and and the staff enough time to to deal with it?
Yeah, we'll meet and discuss and we'll bring it back if we can. I'm sure we can.
I'm hearing a consensus to bring this back. Okay.
That's what we'll do.
I don't.
It should be say, it should say no animals.
It just says no animals. That's that's the.
I can't, I can't swear to it. I can't remember, but I I know most of the walkovers do say no animals.
Yeah, I've seen that people parking at Kagan Park to walk to the beach access seven.
So we're we're good with this coming back up and the staff will work with the chief and. Yes?
To clarify wording, yes.
Joe, can you check to see if they have a decal that you could put over the the turtle, you know, for the dog?
Well, I I'd like to just get with staff and see if those signs need to be updated as DeeDee was saying, maybe they're faded or something. So let's, let me, let me look into that and I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
The only, the only thing is if we put a dog and say dogs not allowed, then you're going to have other animals. So, you know, just.
What other animal would somebody bring?
I don't know.
You never know.
Yeah, you never know. That's what I'm saying.
See somebody with a snake wrapped around their neck.
What I was thinking, what I was thinking, keep the no animals, but have a dog figure. Because I I never had an issue with another animal, have you called?
Just chickens.
Not yet. On the beach, on the beach. So.
Yeah, a dog image on a no animal sign would be something.
There's confused, the proximity Jupiter is confusing because just over the line, there's a million dogs and so.
I mean, we get a good sense of like if people are like lying to you and they legitimately think that this is a.
Now, I've had people say, I have to tell people all the time that I said, no, not in Juno Beach.
They look surprised.
No, they are. People don't know.
There are some websites also, when I just did a a Google search and some websites, dog friendly sites and things like that, they do say Juno Beach. I think there's a confusion by clubs or groups and they're calling it Juno even though it's Jupiter where it's dog friendly. There it's a misnomer. They're saying Juno. So I think that's not helping.
Some people tell them like, yeah, right near the pier, which is kind of accurate. You go three hundred feet north of the pier, you're okay.
And we'll also put in the activity, and now I'm sorry, in the the newsletter stating something, what to do when you see a dog on the beach. So we'll we'll put that in the next newsletter.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Next item is the services for an environmental oversight coordinator, project coordinator, Andrea Dobbins.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Recently, Bob White had from Hope Sound Environmental had submitted his resignation to terminate the contract with the town. So staff has come in before council to have some direction. We've laid out some options that council can deliberate and discuss. When we put this out for bid for the RFQ, there were three firms that participated. Hope Sound Environmental and the Aquatic Research actually tied for first with the staff's the committee's review. So that would be an option to go with aquatic research. They are a very qualified firm. They're up in Jensen Beach. I did speak with them, explained the situation briefly that we might be looking for another environmental consultant. Are they interested? And they said, yes, absolutely. They'd be willing to to step up and assist us in any way that we might need. I also reached out to our town engineer and our landscape architect. They both have been successful in utilizing the services of EW Consulting. They are a local firm. They're in West Palm Beach. They're also up north in Martin County. And I spoke to them and they also were very agreeable to assist us, whatever our needs might be. They have a wonderful website, full service, whatever we might need. They certainly can can provide. So that's another option. Or we could go out and do another RFQ if that is the council's decision.
Thank you. We've got public comment on this and we'll start with Caitlin. Hold on, Diane.
Yes, Mayor, I have comments submitted through the web form. Michael Clarjen Arconata, as the founder of the Juno Beach Ecology Group and as proud member of the Union of Concerned Scientists, it has become self-evident that in the selection process for a new town environmental consultant, the optimal candidate is Sean Patton, Stocking Savvy LLC. His presentation during the Pelican Lake Ecological Workshop with extensive walks around the lake was ecologically thorough, integrating native plant species, litoral shelf, optimal fish population, natural habitats for birds, optimal water quality and regeneration of benthic organisms, the basis of the food chain through practical and self-regulated ecological methods and other ecological interventions. Leading to a superb ecological management plan of Pelican Lake adopted by the town of Juno Beach, it is time to do justice now and select Sean Patton, Stocking Savvy, as the town environmental consultant right away in order to ensure the optimal implementation of the Pelican Lake Management Plan. Nancy Wolf, sixteen thirteen East Hemingway Drive. The town, with much encouragement from its citizens, hired a consultant nearly two years ago to address concerns at Pelican Lake. I have no idea how much money has been spent since two thousand nineteen when the lake's plant life was burned brown by toxic chemicals. And here we are, two years later, still seeking a path forward for the stewardship of Pelican Lake. We understand that technically the lake is defined as a retention basin and water flows in and out of the basin, but does mean that we as a town are okay as with it being a cesspool of sorts, a dumping ground for chemicals, all manner of runoff and host to any and all invasive species, plant or animal. Or can we do better? Do our town councillors have the will to improve the appearance and conditions at Pelican Lake? Or are we going to kick the can down the road? The last two years under the prior consultant's direction have not brought about the changes plan of stewardship and positive outcomes we seek. It seems as though a clear goal statement, timeline and clear blueprint did not really exist the last time we went to bed. We need to set specific realistic goals for the health of our parks and freshwater bodies and hire consultant who can help us reach those goals instead of simply going to the next name on the list from the last go around. We need to apply that we have learned to do better and do better this time. Go to bid after we have to clear goal statement. We do not need huge labs, expensive testing, a large corporate one-size solution. We need sensible eco-friendly plans to suit our needs as a town. We need to open the process. Richard Domian, twenty celestial way, number three oh seven. Ellen Granis and I support the Juno Beach Ecology Group's recommendation of Sean Patton of Stocking Savvy LLC. Don Shapiro, five seventy Ocean Drive, Juno Beach Town Council, Pelican Lake is more than just a retention basin for our town. It is the unique environmental heart of our town. It is to a large extent what makes Juno Beach a special place. Right now, the lake is our most important environmental issue. In order to preserve this wonderful amenity to our community, it is important for us to have the right town environmental consultant. With the departure of our current consultant, it is imperative that we make the correct choice of a new one. Having reviewed the specific expertise background and costs of the various firms that appear to be in the running, it is clear that stocking savvy should be the preferred choice. Neither aquatic research, monitoring, equipment and deployment nor EW consultants are appropriate for the job. We do not require monitoring of the lake's water quality with extensive testing. We certainly do not require wetland delineation for construction. On the other hand, stocking savvy will be able to create an ecologically sound management program to restore the water as well as the flora and fauna of Pelican Lake. They will be able to create the environmentally stable that stability that will preserve the lake and help us save costs in the long run. It behooves us to hire stocking savvy as our environmental consultant for the best interest of Juno Beach. If town council does not find this to be a clear option, then the only other reasonable approach would be to reopen bidding for this position. John Stelludo. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, John Stelludos, yes.
First of all, two minutes is not long enough. We used to have three years ago. Okay, how bad was this lake thirty-four years ago when I came here? It was terrible. There were Norfolk Island pines. There was all types of trees. There was little little things on the ground. You you couldn't even walk around there. Everything was dead because those the needles from the trees killed it. Or old junky sidewalk. But the town council got together and they created what we have now, which is is wonderful. Okay, but let's not stop there. Let's keep going. Let's be committed to this lake. You know, every night I watch the news, channel twenty-five shows Juno Beach Lake, it shows the lake in the opening credits. They've been doing it for like a month now. So it's important. I mean, it's part of Palm Beach County, not just our town. So I want you to listen to this, to our ecology group here. These are a group of people. They're just not residents, but some of them are scientists and some of them have degrees. Do any of you have a degree in horticulture or or biology? Are are you guys Floridians? Have have you grown up with the Florida plants here? Do you know what Florida plants? Last time I told you, palm trees aren't even trees. They're giant grasses. If you're from Florida, you'll learn that after a while, okay? But I I'm saying, please listen to the Juno Beach Ecology. They seem to have found Sean Patton. We need somebody that's that that's really believes in this, you know, and 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 they're committed to this and they're passionate about it. And Sean seems to be the one that is like that out of the out of the groups here. I know, you know, Jim, you're going to be moving on. We we'd like you to help us with getting this done and and getting this group here and getting Sean and maybe, you know, but every time we look at the lake, we remember Jim. Like every time I look up at the the acreage up there that would have been condos, I think of Dan Corbett and I think of the council and how we fought to save that. So we need that same commitment from you guys to save this and listen to these people because they know what they're talking about. Thank you very much.
Diana Davis.
Diana Davis, four forty Sunset Way. My background is over, I have over twenty years as an environmental attorney. And I'm before you as the president of the Juno Beach Ecology Group. We're made up of community members. We have Dr. Ross Wilcox is our scientist consultant for our group. And the Juno Beach Ecology Group strongly favors the no bid option and picking Sean Patton's firm, Stocking Savvy LLC, as our town's environmental consultant for Pelican Lake. And here's the reason why. We've worked, we found stocking savvy and they've participated in the research, the scientific research of the lake, the water quality, the evaluation and surveys of the fish, the plants and the birds and various species. And this all culminated in their creation of a Pelican Lake Management Town that they've provided to the town. It's up in the library, anyone just, and this is an ecology-based management plan for restoration of Pelican Lake. Sean Patton knows the lake and its needs. Sean Patton of Stocking Savvy participated in a half-day Pelican Lake workshop where after providing a presentation, he did a detailed commentary, a walk around the lake and educated everyone who participated in the benefits of native plants and native beneficial fish. As he had a compelling presentation and showed us how we can use biological controls for controlling nuisance species rather than relying on chemical controls. He has outstanding expertise and the our group has a clear conviction that stocking savvy is the best choice. They already know the lake well. They have a good working relationship with town staff who brought them in for the Pelican Lake Workshop. They have outstanding expertise in selecting and managing appropriate plant and fish species. And they'll be able to, although they're not opposed to the use of chemical controls when necessary, it's their objective to create a natural ecosystem where the birds, plants and fish will thrive and they keep the nuisance species in check. And if we do go for bid, I would like the the bidding document to be Sean Patton's management plan for Pelican Lake. Thank you.
Jim Ferguson.
Good evening, everyone. When I was in high school in ninth grade, first day in biology class, there was this wonderful, large fish tank. It wasn't just a fish tank. It was a huge tank. And typically fish tanks have bubblers in them and have all kinds of exotic fish. This one was much more sedate. There was no bubbler in there. And no matter what month you went in into that room and you looked at the fish tank, there were the fish there, there were other creatures in there, and nobody was really intervening in the tank. And the teachers were trying to teach, how do you create a system like this that can exist month after month without any intervention? Except maybe occasionally a fish would die and they would take it out. But even during summer vacation, that fish tank was just left there. There was a correct balance between fish and plants and whatever you needed to do to make the water good because it was New York City water, which is pretty good. But you learned that there was the right balance between these different organisms that enabled them all to live there. The plants didn't get out of control because fish that were in there were eating the plants. There were some fish that were going up to the glass and cleaning off the algae. They were in a natural ecosystem right there. Think about Pelican Lake, you know, fish tanks sometimes have bubblers. Well, we have a bubbler in the lake. We could probably even do without the bubbler. I don't know. But in any case, whether you have a bubbler or not, it's a little bit artificial. The important thing is how do you find the right balance between the kind of fish that will work in the lake? And by the way, in fish tanks too, when you select the fish, it can't be any old fish. Some of them will just eat up all the other fish. That's bad news. So same thing is true in the lake. You've got some aggressive fish there. We don't have quite the right balance. Counselor Halpern has been doing research into how we can stock the lake with preferable fish. That's the kind of approach, the kind of thinking we need. How do we restore a proper balance in the lake? Sean Patton's advised us considerably, these are the species of plants you want all around the borders of the lake and the reasons why you want each plant in each location, because he's very specific about shading and things like that. But also about how do we adjust the slopes so that we don't have these rapid drop offs where no plants can live? You need gradual sloping. Sean has presented us with the whole package. But it doesn't have to be Sean. The important thing is whoever we choose, it's got to be somebody who has an ecological approach, which means if we want the birds back, what kind of fish do we need that the birds love? What kind of nesting areas do we need? What kind of plants do we put in there? How do we filter runoff from contaminating the lake? This is where Sean has the big picture. None of the other firms we have seen, including the two that are under discussion, have anything like that view of how to manage a lake. So it's clear, this is why we're supporting this particular firm.
Mary Ann Hosta.
Mary Ann Hosta?
Good evening. As you all know, I'm a member of the Ecology Group. And, uh, and I will not hide that fact that we all behind Sean Patton because we think he is the best man for the job. He's not only very scientifically, uh, aware of all the things, but he also exercises his job with his heart. He almost considers it a vocation. And I think for that type of job, you must have your heart into it. Now I'm appealing to you five counselors. And somehow I have a feeling that Peggy values the Ecology Group and think that we are important in the community. Now I don't know about Jim Lyons, but what you said, John, was so good. You said he is retiring now and you could give us the best gift I could ever think of. By just now giving us some credibility and standing with us and maybe considering Sean Patton. And then I'm looking at DeeDee. She's so proud to claim all the time that she is the one who found John Patton. She did research. You all know how well she researches things. And she found him and she will tell you he was the best she found. So I'm appealing to her to stand with us. Now, as far as the mayor is concerned, and Elaine, I'm not sure where you're standing and I don't know you well enough to talk to you. But, uh, consider us. We are trying to do a good job.
I received no further comments.
Okay. Does any other member of the public wish to be heard on this? Okay. Andrea, anything else?
Just one other consideration for council to decide upon. So whoever the consultant is, um, they're going to be working intimately with our staff, whether it's Tony, myself, Joe, um, Frank. So a consideration would be possibly allowing staff to interview them and see if there's a good fit to have the consultant. How do we work with them? How, can we vet them out and see how they're going to interact with the public? Interact with the council. So just another consideration to, to present as you guys deliberate.
And Andrea, a quick question. How we, we, how long ago was it that HOB Sound Environmental Consultants was retained? And how much total did we pay them?
I think we're just a couple thousand dollars.
About $4,000 and it was about 18 months.
That's, thank you. Okay. Questions for Andrea or discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to have a discussion. Thank you, Mary Ann, for introducing my topic here. So yeah, I, I have a little prepared statement here because I wanted to make sure that I got it right. And yes, I am proud of introducing Sean Patton to the Ecology Group and to the town. I met him in November of 2019 at Mounts Botanical Garden. He was giving a continuing education class on using ecological principles and native species of plants, fish and insects to maintain healthy ponds here in Florida. I was instantly impressed with his knowledge, particularly his recommended use of biological controls versus chemical controls to help keep freshwater ecosystems beautiful and healthy and restore those that have been lost. I spoke with him about Pelican Lake after the class and the challenges we were having. And he was very excited at, at the idea of being able to help restore the health of the lake. In the spring of 2020, when I joined the Ecology Group, uh, we teamed up and I introduced Sean to Diana and the rest of the group. And, um, you know, Diana, with her biology background instantly took to Sean and they were able to discuss things on a different higher level. Then we had the walk with the town. Many of the council members joined us on the walk around Pelican Lake. And Sean showed us various things where we could make improvements to our ecosystem, to the plants and, and some of the invasives that could be removed. And we saw right away firsthand the value that he could impart to the project and how we could heal our ecosystem. So that being said, if I have to choose somebody, it would hands down be Sean. He is friendly. He's fun. He's interactive. He's easy to approach. It's like walking around the lake with your brother. I can't think of anybody who would be, uh, more personable and, and passionate about that lake than Sean. And we've seen that firsthand and he, you know, he stepped right into the lake and took a sample of the water. And, you know, he's very interactive. Where's Bob White? I don't know that he ever took a heartfelt interest like I see Sean taking, um, in the past. So my vote would be for Sean Patton and Stocking Savvy. But that being said, I'm also wondering, do we need just one consultant? We saw how our hands were tied when we had one consultant and we didn't want to make a bad impression by getting, you know, quotes from anybody else. So do we really just want to tie ourselves to one person? And if the rest of council decides that one consultant is the way to go, then for me it's Sean Patton.
So I think that, uh, to Andrea's point here at the end, you guys are going to be the ones working with these people day in and day out, our staff. We need to rely on you all to interview them and get back to us with who you think would best suit our town. Because I, I don't know about the lake. I'm relying on you guys. I can tell you it's beautiful and I love walking around it. But the ins and outs of it, it's staff. So I'd be in favor of you all interviewing and getting back to us. And also I do agree with the last point DeeDee made that can we use a consultant on an as-needed basis? Do we have to retain a consultant, period? So we don't tie our hands. Another option, another thought, another idea.
If it's all right, Jason and Jim, I'd like to hear from you before I give some suggestions.
Jim, before you go, uh, Joe, Joe had something he wanted to comment on.
Well, I just said, did you want me to answer that question because it came up twice?
Um, let's go ahead and get the answer.
Sure. Um, just to give you a little history, um, ERM was created like, I think it was like in 87 and that's who we've dealt with. We, we, I talked to ERM today. I mean, uh, we, we have a great relationship with the, um, the Palm Beach County ERM department has grown so much. So that's, that's our right-hand person, our right-hand department. So we always have that. So just so you know, we have lots of Hatchet Grove, uh, Alexa Hatchet River District with, uh, Dr. Arrington. We all, but we need another person as an environmental oversight person who can get in and talk to us about controversial issues. So I do recommend hiring somebody. But just remember, everybody should know, we have those other things we've used for many, many years and we have a great relationship with them.
I just want to add to that. I actually reached out to, um, to Questa and spoke with the town clerk there. And I spoke with the town manager at North Palm Beach, a village of North Palm Beach, about their environmental committees because they actually see the value of having a committee and one has a task force and, and one has a committee. And neither town retains one single consultant. Now granted, we're looking at a very location-specific, um, person, a consultant for that location, but they do not use one environmental consultant for their committee or for their whole town. And I thought that that was interesting. So.
Yeah, they use the format of a working committee, uh, where they basically have some experts on their committee.
But as, as far as managing different environmental sectors of the town, they don't rely on just one.
No, that's why I said ERM is the best. We use.
Well, we also have FWC. We have a lot of agency.
I didn't mention that, but we have a lot of people we, we rely on.
Peggy, you wanted to defer?
Yeah, I'd like to hear what, of the view I have to say first.
Okay. Jim?
Okay. We, staff has given us three options. Option number one is to select aquatic research. And they submitted an RFQ and they were tied for first with Home Sound, uh, Environmental back in July of 2020. Okay. Our second option is EW consulting, which I would rule them out because they did not submit an RFQ. So for me, it's between option one and option three. Option three is going out for an RFQ. An RFQ is a requirement for qualifications. And when you submit an RFQ, we know the qualifications of the company. We know the references, who they've done work for. And we're able to check with the references, were they satisfied? Also, do they have the required insurance? Do they have the general liability? Do they have the workers comp? Do they have the, uh, professional liability? You know, Mr. Patton did not have the insurance last time, so he could not submit an RFQ because he didn't have the insurance requirements. So now, you know, if we want to consider whoever, we need to go to an RFQ. And that's the way that the town can interview the, the applicants. So I'm in favor of going for item three, going back to an RFQ. And that way they can be interviewed by staff, see what your interaction is. And then you make our recommendation to us and then we'll do it like we did before. We'll grade it and we'll select somebody. So I think that's the way we should go.
Okay. Peggy, you still? Okay, I'll, I'll go and then, uh, we leave it to you. I, I'm not opposed to an RFQ. I, I'd certainly be in favor of that as one option. Only because I, I saw some written material that, uh, Mr. Patton indicates that, if an RFQ were open, he would want to, uh, make a proposal to, to the town. And I think that gives him an opportunity to, uh, to do that. The, the, the minor disconnect I, I, I see and it's, you know, with respect to some of the comments, I, I don't think it's an effort to, um, not support the ecological group i- in any way. I think, uh, I personally think the ecological group, uh, as it's defined, while the focus has been on Pelican Lake, I, I look at it as broader issues. I now apparently Pelican Lake Park, um, not just the lake itself. It, it, it's a bigger picture view. When I look at the environmental, the, the, the role of what would be an environmental oversight coordinator, I, maybe we don't necessarily want that title, but to the extent we're talking about environmental, uh, some, some individual or entity that would be an environmental, uh, expertise or resource for, for the town. I, I think we've got the, the Pelican Lake. We've got the Pelican Lake Park and other park areas in town. I think we've got the beach areas. I think we've got the environmental sensitive land. I think we've got plenty of other issues that, um, could be impacted by the environment. And probably in ways that we don't necessarily anticipate right now, today. So whether we did this by way of an RFQ and provided the staff with the additional resource in addition to ERM or, uh, FWC or anybody else that they, they could call at the county level, which essentially there's no out-of-pocket expense associated with. And, um, the, the idea, a- at least in my view, would be if, if we took a bigger picture view, if we leave it up to staff, my understanding is the, the staff doesn't have to come back to council. They can spend up to $500 and choose whoever they would want to as a potential resource at any time.
Well, we, we would, we would come back. We, we would send you a contract. It's probably on consent agenda after.
Okay. For anything that you would need as far as additional expertise after.
We'd like to enter a contract.
So I, I, I mean, to the extent that with just the Pelican Lake Workshop issues and, and other issues to have spent, uh, I, I don't, you know, I'm not going to do the math and average it out, but it doesn't seem like we're spending a, a, an excessive amount of money. And, and I would say from the staff's perspective, if, uh, Mr. Patton is the right person for the lake issues, they, they certainly turn to him. And if somebody else is, if EW is the right resource for, for another environmental area in the town or, um, you, you, we've got the flexibility to do that and we're not tied into, um, our hands aren't tied as, as I think DeeDee pointed out, and, and we've got some flexibility to the extent that, um, you know, I, you know, I certainly appreciate that the ecological group is, is, is definitely seeing Mr. Patton as a resource. And I, I, you know, I'm, I'm deferential to that, but at the same time, or, or I'm respective of that. But at the same time, when it was time for the RFQ, we didn't know what his pricing was. We didn't know his insurance status. We, we didn't get anything from him. And, and that just, again, we're, we're, we're just up here trying to make the right policy decision. And, and it, it does refer to Pelican Lake, but it, it references these other areas or a broader environmental oversight issues that, that could be impactful. So that I, I'd be in favor of either the RFQ or we're leaving it within the latitude of the staff to, to retain the services that they need in the different areas as they see fit. Peggy?
The reason I waited is I was hoping we had three votes, but, um, let me, let me talk a little bit. The council's knowledge of what the Ecology Group's position is and the citizens. I want to see if we can find some kind of a, um, um, way to mutually come to an agreement on this. But I first want to say that I believe the Ecology Group has done such a tremendous job and added a, a real value to, to our town, um, with information and advice on Pelican Lake. To me, they're truly citizen leaders. I think they're experts in their own right. The Ecology Group has many members. And I was introduced to a gentleman when I went to the last Ecology meeting, um, that has a PhD in biology that worked, um, as an environmental specialist for FPL in Mountain, Martin County. There was a horticulturist there. Um, they do a tremendous amount of research. They really do. And, um, they're so committed to the wellbeing of Pelican Lake from an environmental standpoint. Uh, when you look at the material, it's clear that the Ecology Group and most of the citizens are really concentrating on Pelican Lake right now. And so perhaps council, maybe we should put a little bit more emphasis and concentration on Pelican Lake and the reasons why they want to select Stocking Savvy as the town's environmental consultant. Um, I met with Sean Patton. I know he is someone has, who has truly brought value to, to our biodiversity project. It's for a minimal amount of money also. His, his fees, his cost. He's helped in, in some of the decisions that have been made for Pelican Lake. He is truly a lake specialist. Even though we've spent only about $4,000 with, with HSC, I don't think the Ecology Group believes, nor do I believe that it's necessary to spend that type of money if it's not necessary because it's the citizens' money. And if we can get by with someone that the Ecology Group, um, is interested in using and has that specialty, I think we should start considering that a little bit more heavy. So what I'm, what I'm actually saying is that, um, with the decisions going forward, it, it really is not, I don't think it's necessary to have an environmental specialist, specialist that's going to cost a lot of money for this town. But in the future, it doesn't eliminate Joe from being able to say, I have certain areas in town that I need some help. And so perhaps we need to get a different environmental consultant. And then if it's the mangroves, it's the iguanas, then perhaps we could use aquatic research, which is someone that I know the environmental Ecology Group were, said were probably the, the next choice for them. But I'm going to make a motion right now that council, council choose Stocking Savvy as the town's consultant for a period of one year. But before we call a vote on this, what I want to do is, is talk a little bit about, I want council to be aware that the Ecology Group does understand that Sean Patton would work for the town. I think that's an important fact that we would have to be able to discuss. And, and I think the Ecology Group, from talking to them today, understands that also. And I also, Joe, would like your comments on that and, and let you go ahead and comment on the fact that if we, if we did get Stocking Savvy for a year and then we can take another look at it and review it and see how he's doing. See what the cost savings is. See what kind of, of information and, and benefit that I think he's going to give as the Ecology Group does to the town and to Pelican Lake.
Well, you're, you're exactly right. The, the, the first thing we would sit down the consultant with and say, you work for the town. So obviously that would be the first conversation we have. Yeah. Not, not that they couldn't field, um, phone calls from the public or anything, but the town's not paying for that. So you. So you work for the town and you give advice to the town. And so that would be the first thing we do. Because there is, Sean's great. I mean, there's nothing I can say bad about Sean. It would be the smallest learning curve because he's been here, he's been out here, besides those two firms. It's just definitely up to you all, where you want to go. There's, I stayed every, almost every minute for that four hour or six hours, or whatever that tour was. And there was not much said that I didn't agree with in what he said. So there's not, but it's up to you all. But I would make it clear whoever you hire, a firm or Sean or a person, that they work for the town, if that's your question.
Thank you, John. So I'm going to appeal to the council to, let's put a little bit heavier weight on the ecology group and the work that they've done for us. And let's go ahead and take a vote on the motion. Or if you want to discuss it, that would be fine, too. Well, I need a second, right? But we can discuss it also.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second now.
All right, discussion. Peggy, I agree with much of what you said. I just don't think that's the right way to make a policy decision. I think that if that's your inclination, and you don't want to defer to the town staff on this, if you're not in favor of that, and letting them choose which experts for which areas, I think are the right policy direction would be to go with an RFQ process.
I agree. Mr. Patton has not been vetted. When I say not been vetted, we haven't. I mean, I don't know what his qualifications are. I don't know what his references are. I don't know who he's done work with. I don't know if they were satisfied, dissatisfied. I did the wake, lake walk with him. I was very impressed, okay? I don't know if he has the insurance that's required by the town. I know he has insurance now. I don't know what insurance he has. And we have an obligation. We have to protect the town. And what I'd like to see is us going through an RFQ with whoever applies and let staff get back to us who they're comfortable with, and then they can use several of them. Not to be stuck with one person. And like you said, maybe for the gopher tortoises, whatever, it's aqua research. For the lake, it's Sean. But what I'm saying is, to appoint somebody tonight, that's not protecting the town.
So I think the way the memo was written, it wasn't specific. I mean, should that subject of the memo have been instead of services for an environmental oversight coordinator, should that have been a Pelican Lake specialist? Because are we really looking for somebody who's going to tell us about, you know, the mangroves and the ocean environment or the dune environment, or is this really just about Pelican Lake? And if it is just about the lake, then why not ask Sean to send in his license? I understand from the letter that was submitted that he has grown his company in size. He has different credentials and he's more capable of fulfilling the RFQ requirements. So maybe we can solicit that from him and review it. If it's not up to snuff, then we can put it out for an RFQ. But if it is, why wouldn't we not consider him?
And I think DeeDee, that was my point, because, and to your point about it being a policy decision, when we're looking at just the lake, we've had a lot of input from Stocking Savvy. We've had a lot of input from Hope Sound. We've had a lot of input from the ecology group. And when you look at the ecology group and their feeling on using Stocking Savvy and the benefits to being a lake specialist, we're not, they're not looking at the iguanas. They're not looking at the mangroves. This is more of a specialist for that area. And I think that's where the difference comes into play on you calling it a policy decision and doing an RFQ. Because I
The other thing that I want to point out is that he's provided the Pelican Lake management plan. I'm a copywriter, and a lot of times when I interview for a new job with a new client, they'll ask me to do a copy test. They'll assign me an article or some kind of thing, a brochure to write, and I'll do it. Sometimes I get paid and sometimes I don't, but it's part of the vetting process for my profession. Sean provided that Pelican Lake management plan, and that's his resume. He's proven that he understands that lake. He's looked at it in detail. He's provided great suggestions and resources in that manual. You know, I'd challenge any of the other companies to look at that lake in a couple of hours and present that type of plan that's so well thought out. So I think that speaks for himself. And, you know, the technical part of licenses and paperwork, that could always be sorted out.
You say that, DeeDee, but the next time he puts his foot in the lake, what if he slips and he breaks?
No, well, I'm saying, we do make, I'm not saying he shouldn't be insured. I want him to be insured. Anybody, I'm not saying to ignore that. I'm saying we can vet him and see if he has those credentials.
And I think that would take place during the RFQ process. That's
Which would also open it up to hiring somebody else who's not him. I mean, are we doing that to eliminate his ability to apply?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
No, I'm basing part of that on his letter that was sent in. That's part of, I think it's part of the backup materials, or at least it's part of the public
Just got it today. We can add it to
But it indicates that he now has the insurance and the other various qualifications that would have prevented him from making application last time. So I'd welcome him to be part of that process.
Is that something that staff could discuss with him, though, and make sure that they have it? That he does have the insurance and the information that's required for the town? And if we did an RFQ, then the criteria would have to change a little. Because if we're looking for an overall environmental consultant, that's different. That is so different than a lake specialist. So, you know, that's where we need, Joe, you might need to step in here a little bit and say, maybe this was something that we should look at differently and not be so stringent on it has to be an environmental specialist for the entire town. And not that Sean Patton couldn't handle that and couldn't do that. But I think in this case, this might be a little bit different story here.
Yes, you and DeeDee are making that point, which is excellent. Our scope of services, when we went out 18 months ago, was a lot different than now that we've done the workshops and everything else. And my point about ERM and FWC and Parks Department, that we have other, in Longahatchee, we have other firms and other resources that we can go to when we have a dune issue or we have a mangrove or gopher tortoise. So we, if it's, obviously, this comes, it's a policy decision. So it comes from you. If the focus is the lake, then you would tell us, let's make the focus more the lake. And those, we would change the scope. Because the first scope was not, it was more of, more encompassing everything. And now that we've lived through it for 18 months, I think the scope should be changed more to be lake-specific or centric. If that makes sense to all of you.
Yeah, it should be for an aquatic freshwater aquatic specialist.
I think that's what we're seeing in the workshop. Those are the questions that are coming up. It's on the lake.
Is anybody opposed to an RFQ for a limited scope for supporting the lake?
Do we need to decide what we want? Like, do we want an environmental consultant for the general Juno Beach? Or do we want someone just for the lake? I think that's very different.
Exactly.
Number one. Number two, again, do we want a person under contract? Instead of, I know you said we did, but if it's just for the lake, do you really need a person under contract?
I think you do, because all those insurance issues and all those, I mean, it's like a checklist. I make sure everything is done and everything is fine, so we can go forward with that person.
So then it sounds like we need someone to go under the bidding process, an RFQ. And he, Stocking Savvy did not go through the RFQ process. According to his own words in his own letter, he did not have the proper qualifications. This time, he does. So he says, let him go ahead and reapply for the RFQ. And then this way, we have RFQ, we went out to bid, you guys can interview him, and then we can make a policy decision, which is best for the town. Because right now, we don't know what insurance he has. We don't know what his costs are, or anyone else for that matter. So that's where I stand with that.
So I have a question. Don't we use other contractors and services in an à la carte fashion?
No, they're all under the umbrella of that Simmons and White. So they're all protected with all those issues of administration.
So what about aquagenics? How did, what was our relationship with them when they were handling the lake care?
They're a service provider. They're not a consultant.
So supposing he's
But they had insurance anyway, yes.
Well, obviously, everybody's got to be insured. That goes without saying. But what about if Stocking Savvy was to be a service provider? I mean, does it change anything?
They're a consultant. I mean, Len can answer that question.
What's the difference between a service provider and a consultant?
Aquagenic sprays for the lake.
Oh, yeah, they're just, I mean, a consultant actually helps you formulate policy. A service provider just provides a particular discreet service.
And so we don't have any consultants that are à la carte?
Help me. I don't think of any.
We entered an agreement of some sort with everybody.
Go into that umbrella.
Right, everyone through Simmons and White, we have a continuing contract for services, and they're required to have the same insurance and all that kind of stuff through that umbrella contract that we have.
But no one besides agreements as well.
Well, for specific construction projects, absolutely.
Yeah, we never just do business with somebody without some kind of protection.
In contract.
Yeah, there's a
There's always an agreement or a contract, yes.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, the microphone.
You know, we wasted 18 months and spent $4,000, and I don't see any difference in the lake. So if you are now continuing, why do you laugh, Elaine? You don't, you see a difference?
There's a difference. We're not using the aquashade, that the clarity of the lake is much better. We did put more plantings.
So right now, we want to kick it down the road again and extend another half year until we make some move. And I think we should be proactive. And I'd always go from one meeting to the other, et cetera. Now, what DeeDee said is, of course, you will check out that the insurance is correct. Of course, you check out the price. And we know the price because we have been paying it so far. It is very competitive and certainly less than Hope Sound. So think about that.
Go ahead, Diane.
I appreciate Mary Ann's, Diana Davis, 440 Sunset Way, Juno Beach Ecology Group. I appreciate Mary Ann bringing up the urgency of the situation. And I don't know the last time you've walked around Pelican Lake, but the torpedo grass is really taking over. The last time that it was addressed in a holistic way was November 2019, where we had the big die-off and decided we need to bring in an environmental consultant so we can manage it. And then we were waiting for the grant that would provide chemicals and native plants, and that didn't come through. And the other grant didn't come through. So now here we are, and it is two years later, and something needs to be done. And November, I think, is your preferred month for spraying. And you need to have an environmental consultant on board that could supervise that process, or we'll end up back in the same boat that we were November 2019. So, and I know the town council has already approved the tiger, which is more species-specific, but you do need to have oversight in the field when they're actually performing that work and designating the zones and having it done on an incremental basis. Thank you.
I can just say, I support Councilor Wheeler's proposal with the proviso that if you would say, hire Stocking Savvy for a period of one year, conditional upon town staff vetting qualifications, insurance, and any other requirements that would have been in the RFQ and providing any other supporting documents that the vice mayor thinks we should know before you make a final decision, I would suggest tonight, make a tentative decision on those positive outcomes. I think this would be a great opportunity for everybody in this town to walk away feeling we are working together as one team on the lake. We are not in opposition to each other.
I appreciate the comments. I'm not in opposition. I'm just trying to make the right policy decision. I'm also not inclined to kick a can down the road six months. That's not the purpose here. I'd like to, you know, take care of this and replace Hope Sound with whatever is the appropriate provider, and but do it in a way that protects the town and makes sense. And I think the RFQ process is the way to do it. We could limit the scope and hopefully do it on an expedited basis. I don't know if we can get it by the next meeting, perhaps. But I, you know, we did this on a broader scale already. I don't think narrowing it to a more limited scope of service is really going to delay it at this point. But it's going to be a fair process and make sure the town's protected and that everybody that submits their, for the RFQ, is qualified. And it sounds like Sean Patton would be qualified and have the qualifications, the insurance is necessary and everything else. And, you know, I think the council certainly heard the opinion of a number of people. And, you know, that is, the opinions are respected. It's also trying to just handle this in the right process. That's it. And again, not withdrawing it out six months.
So I have another, one second. What I'd like to propose, since we all see the merits of Sean Patton and his knowledge base, what if Joe calls Sean tomorrow and says, look, you're the forerunner. Council wants to make sure that you have the qualifications. And if you do, we'd like to move forward with you. Can you reach out to him tomorrow and have him fax or email his license and the other requirements that would be part of his qualifications and approval for working for the town? And see if he has that documentation? And if he doesn't, if it's something that's easy for him to pull together, whether it's a permit or something like that, I know he works a lot in Sarasota and on the West Coast. I don't know if you need county-specific approvals or licenses to work on this coast.
No, it's a consultant.
So could you reach out to him tomorrow? Would everybody be open to that? Would my fellow counselors allow Joe to reach out to Sean and see if he has all the qualifications? And if he doesn't, I don't know, can you alert us by email and say, you know, Sean didn't have the qualifications? Or does, you know?
DeeDee, I'm not opposed to that, but I think that that's effectively kicking the can down the road. Because if he doesn't have the qualifications, we have to come back at the next meeting and decide what we're going to do as a council. If he does have the qualifications, we still have to wait until the next meeting to make a decision on what to do with him. My inclination would be, if he's got the qualifications and may very well be the front runner here, let's see if anybody else even bids on it and/or submits for it. And let's try to move forward at the next meeting.
DeeDee, I haven't seen the RFQ packet, but I'm assuming it's very detailed. It's not going to be something that Mr. Patton can get back to the town manager right away? No.
Well, that's making it burdensome, because now staff has to take the time to put this packet together, and that alone is time-consuming. So
Yes.
So why even go there if we have somebody that's
There's a lot of merit in what you're saying, DeeDee. We just did this 18 months ago, and we got three people, and one was in
I'd rather wait one month to find out if Sean has the right licenses and paperwork than wait a month just to have an RFQ go out and then wait another month to get results back. You know, then we're two, three months down the line. Can we call him up now and ask him? Can we get him on the Zoom?
I'm going to ask Len a question, if I may. Notwithstanding, Peggy has a motion that hasn't been, so that can still go through, just hiring him directly. With, obviously, with Jim's excellent amendment with, obviously, we're going to check all the paperwork and stuff like that. But can't we do like a hybrid where we just, it doesn't have to be a formal RFQ where staff just interviews two or three firms and just hires, it's like an informal and hires who we think is right for the best fit for the town? Because it's such an informal
If council authorizes that, you absolutely can. We don't have to go through the formal RFQ process.
Right.
I mean, that's the process we chose before, but
I thought that was the answer, but I just want to make sure you hear that. We don't have to go through this, and I don't recommend it. Because last time, it did take months. It took a long time, and we got three firms, and one was out of town. Now we see that we have maybe three total. We can do that in-house and hire somebody. If that's okay.
And what's this other process called? Is there a name for the other?
It's just an
It's just, no, there's no name.
It's a little bellow, informal bidding process.
It's really, I mean, it's common going out for, it's like going out for quotes. That's always a staff function if it's under a certain level. They just talk to different vendors and they come back and give you their recommendation.
Expedited or truncated RFQ process?
Essentially.
Certainly be in favor.
And first you have to answer the, you guys have said it, Elena said it several times. Are we just looking for Pelican Lake-centric? Because the last scope of service was more, much broader for the town, which I think we don't need that. Like I said, we have other resources in the county that we've relied on for thirty years and been very successful.
This should just be about the lake in my mind.
Okay, so I'm hearing two, three, four. Okay, so that's discarded, yes. So it'll be, the scope of service will be more Pelican Lake-centric.
Do you may just add Pelican Lake and Pelican Lake Park because the surrounding land around the lake itself is part of the process.
That's all related, of course, of course.
And I just want to add, I know that DeeDee and I obviously want to make sure the town is protected, but I know that we have cases where we've deviated from the RFQ. And I think, you know, what you're talking about, Joe, is something that we can do. And I think it hopefully will be successful in understanding that stocking savvy is the right person to get for this. But if you do set criteria, if you wanted to ask, you could use the Pelican Lake Management Plan, which they have suggested. Because that, well, that's stocking safies, stocking savvy. So you don't really need to do that with them, but if you wanted to do it.
I would not recommend that. It's too biased. Thank you for the word. So we would just come up with criteria. We do this all the time. This is what we do. We would just definitely make it less informal, but obviously make sure all the paperwork is there on any of the firms.
Right.
And we can have something for you next meeting.
Okay, I'd be okay with that, yes.
Okay.
Caitlin's raising her hand.
There is still a motion on the table.
I was going to say that.
That retract, retract my motion then.
You can withdraw it if the secondary, if DeeDee agrees to withdraw it as well.
Yes.
I forget. I don't need to answer the question.
So the consensus is?
I'm sorry? The consensus is the bellow informal process will be.
So does that mean it gets publicly noticed? What is that?
That was my question, actually, Len, because we're going to advise them. I think the meetings have to be open. So if, well, I'll go over, I don't know the answer to that.
Let's talk about the process.
We'll have to, we'll have to talk about the legal process of that because it's.
Are you, so you're proposing you're going to bring back a recommendation in December?
Yes, I'm only going to those three firms.
Okay.
And because.
Oh, okay.
Why go to any, we already did this eighteen months ago and nobody applied. So let's go to those three firms that are interested. And we, we come up with a criteria and a scoring that's more lake-centric.
Okay.
And my question was going to be, how much open, does that an open?
Well, if you are.
If recommending to them, I think it's an open meeting.
So if you're going to be scoring, then it has to be a public, you just have to notice it.
Yes. So Joe, we're talking stocking savvy, EW Consulting and Aquatic Research. Is that, was it three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's it.
You have to speak into the microphone.
I can answer a question. We're going to get started on it.
You're okay.
We're going to get started on it immediately, Mary Ann.
Yeah, I would like to have an idea about the timeframe. And also, I would like to say eighteen months ago, you did that process, everything to the rules and regulations. And look, right now, eighteen months later, we are looking for a new firm. So you know, if you just be bureaucrats and do everything according, you know, to rules and regulations, you know, sometimes that doesn't guarantee you a great result, as we have seen. So think about it. But I guess, I'm not.
I think I have direction. Thank you so much.
Okay, next item is the nine eleven remembrance site update with options and resident survey. Project Coordinator and Risk Manager Andrea Dobbins.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, staff was directed to reach out to the public, to our residents. We sent out an email with a survey asking for some feedback. Seven hundred email addresses were sent, this questionnaire. We asked if they would like to see more shade trees or if they'd like to have a shade structure at the nine eleven remembrance site. It was overwhelming with the response for the shade trees. I will say, out of seven hundred, the response was not overwhelming. We had forty-eight responses, but the overwhelming response was that people were more interested in having a natural look and having the shade trees. So the breakdown was forty-one votes for more shade trees. There were six votes for a shade structure. And then there was one vote for both. So at this point, we're looking for direction from council on how to proceed.
So I'll start. In my mind, the survey was biased towards only two options, either trees or a structure. There was no option given to replace the pergola with any kind of vines or plantings. So that's survey bias. I think there would have been people who would have responded in favor of a third option had it been given there. If one person got creative and wrote in that she wanted both. When I looked at the results, there were actually, I think, three people. One, Mr. Malsov said trellis with bogan via. Lori said the pergola with bogan via. So even though he's using the word trellis and it's not a pergola, it's still some kind of structure. And then Ms. Myers wrote both. So I think there were actually three people who, you know, who could be considered in the both category. At the last meeting, Vice Mayor Lyons stated that people pass out from the heat during ceremonies. And I think that that underscores the need for more adequate shade than only trees can provide. Personally, I would like to see a pergola with native vines, such as some kind of blooming jasmine for shade. I think that structure worked well and would provide the additional shade we need while combining natural native elements. I brought this painting that you see there at the end. That's courtesy of Tony and Si Seymour. They'd like to donate it to the town, but I put it there tonight also as a reminder of what we had before. That hopefully that will inspire some thoughts about doing a combined option. So again, I'd like to see something that's trees, a trellis or pergola. Some, well, not trellis because that's just vertical, but a pergola, an actual shade structure. And like I said at the last meeting, they do make them out of other materials than wood, something that would last longer.
Okay, Elaine?
My opinion is still the, the trees, natural.
Peggy?
I always want to wait to hear both of you speak first, but I'll go ahead. I agree with you, DeeDee. We think a lot alike. I thought that it actually, the survey only said it's either this or this. And people didn't realize that they could have them both and there are going to be shade trees there and we could have a structure there. But I don't think we have the vote here in order not to move forward with shade trees. And can I get a little input here with that, you guys speaking first? So I know which direction I'm going to head with my conversation because it matters to me on how I approach this. If we're not going to get the vote. I do want to thank staff. You guys did a great job. Oh, my goodness. You guys got that survey out very quickly and especially since we had just two weeks between the council meetings.
On the language, I know about.
It was very specific on how the language is phrased.
Did we say we agreed on the language?
Yes.
That was the direction the staff was given.
Yeah, I know enough about surveying bias to be dangerous, which is, I don't know much. But every, every survey is biased.
Then my understanding was different.
Yeah, no, we checked on the language before we sent it out to you. All we said is, this is a consensus of language? And that was the consensus of the language.
Yeah, so next time we'll know better and we'll just kind of review the language a little bit closer, perhaps. But even so, I think we're not going to get the vote up here to do anything different. I'm not, not in favor of shade trees. I don't think that's going to be that bad. But I do think that four pitch apple trees plus the three that are already there is not necessarily the right landscape design that we want. I'm not an expert in landscaping, but this is a very special area. And I know that we want to hopefully see a veterans memorial there eventually. And I think having various heights of landscaping is always an element of design. It brings more diversity, variety of speech, species. And Diane mentioned to me a variety of birds when you do that also. So I think that's important. So I really think that maybe we should have someone come in that can give us an idea of design. I think it's a small area. I don't think we need to spend $5,000 to get some type of advice. So I was wondering if, since Lori did such a great job on our town hall park and she did do a beautiful job on that park. If we're interested in having her give us a few suggestions, she can get the plants at wholesale. She's giving them to us at wholesale. She's made suggestions to me of spiral junipers, which are, which are salt tolerant. She said she would only charge $1,000 to give us a design on that area. So I think it behooves this council to, to take a look at perhaps what Lori can give. Not spend the extra $5,000 to get a design and then have to spend the money again for all of the plantings and all of that. So really, we're looking at $1,000 for Lori and we'd be looking at the cost of the plants wholesale. So I'd like council to consider that. If the decision is to not go forward and get some more advice on a shade structure.
Jim?
First of all, I'm in favor of the shade trees. I want to say if we, if we built a structure, it has to conform to a Cat Five hurricane. You have to have engineering plans for any structure. You're talking a lot of money. And it was overwhelming on the survey that the residents want shade trees, not the structure. So I'm supportive of the shade trees. As far as Lori's concerned, I'd like to hear from staff. I mean, I, I didn't think it was, I just thought we were going to put some trees in, that you knew exactly what we were doing.
If we could go back to, yeah, the original memo that I had discussed at the last meeting gave, I tried to work as many different options as possible so that council could talk through whether we wanted to have staff do it, work with a landscape architect. You know, we were just trying to get to a point of, do we want a structure? If we want a structure, here's what we need to do. Do we want, I know shade was originally what was indicated as an important factor. DeeDee had indicated that many residents had said they wanted shade. So we were trying to navigate, how do we want to accomplish getting more shade out there? Out there. And so the two options are obviously a structure or more trees. And then that was the direction that you gave us to go and ask the residents. But if we go back to the original memo, we have, this is not a whole landscaping project. We have some basic functions that we need to take care of from an aesthetic and a safety standpoint. I have concrete and footers out there that need to be removed. Okay, so that's first and foremost. If we do nothing else, that's fine. I would like to get that removed. Have the gra, have that area either mulched or sodded, whatever, just to make it safe and aesthetically pleasing. What you do from there is, it may be another discussion. But we were just trying to get to a place of, of making it look less of an ice ore. Because right now, it's not an attractive, it's not an honoring place for what it's intended for. So that's where we're going. If we want to do a whole redesign with the landscaping, we can certainly do that. How do we want to do that? Do we want to have the landscape architect? Again, you're looking at fees and money that will be spent. Lori is great with doing garden plantings and I know she does a lot of residential homes. But that doesn't necessarily mean that she's a good fit for the town. She doesn't have any licensing. She doesn't have any insurance. She's, she's a great person to get feedback from. But in terms of a professional site out there, I think we would go with a different direction, either asking Rob Dinsmore with UDS or we keep it real basic. If you don't like the, the trees that were out there, the pit chapels, we could certainly come up. We have an in-house arborist. We could ask our in-house arborist what his recommendation might be for shade. We have a great resource of staff and folks right here that could offer it up. But I think from a standpoint of functionality, I would really urge council to make a decision on just moving forward with at least allowing us to get the site looking better. We had to take it down. It was a safety issue. So if we could decide on that and then decide later, I mean, I know Tony's great with getting his guys out there and mulching so we could at least make it presentable. But I'd really like to have a decision made from the standpoint of at least getting the concrete and the footers out and the root balls, because those are very large root balls out there.
Andrea, who's the arborist?
Dave Johnson.
Who is he? I've never heard that name.
He's been here for twenty-five years. Twenty-seven.
He's in Public Works.
Yes.
And I can appreciate, I'm sorry, were you to finish? No, go ahead.
I guess, for me, whatever trees get planted, I'd like to see it be predominantly native. That, that's my thing. Lori did well with the town hall park, but her focus isn't on native plants. We don't have a lot of natives in that design. So whoever does the landscaping, I'd like to see a native tree focus. But yeah, Andrea, I appreciate that perspective. And I mean, if staff can accomplish that with native trees and our, you know, their expertise, then I'm okay with that. I mean, if I'm not, if I'm not getting the pergola, then that's the way to go. Just make it safe and pretty.
I don't think we're.
Okay. I've got a couple of comments to add. First, I think we all understood that the interest, notwithstanding the, whatever bias was in the, the quick email survey that went out. I think we didn't want to leave this as an outstanding matter. We didn't want to push it out even to the next council meeting beyond if we could avoid it. So we wanted whatever feedback we could get from any interested residents. We, we got some feedback, not, not a ton, but it was, and I certainly give credit to, to our folks, not, notwithstanding the perceived bias. I think if, we certainly have a few that said, I like the shade structure and I want trees too. We, we've got, I think most people certainly were capable of adding their opinion if they really wanted the shade structure to be part of it or, or an either, you know, as opposed to an either or. I think we got some feedback that just shows that, that, at least initially, the shade trees were pointing us in the direction. I think we were close to making a potential decision at the last meeting. We wanted some resident feedback. We got some resident feedback. It's fairly clear what direction it's going. On the next issue, as far as an arborist or a landscape architect, I, I'm not a big proponent of spending money unnecessarily, but I think a landscape architect in this case, it's, it's an important site from the town. I think we all agree on that. That's why we put the resources and time and effort and ask the staff to put the resources and time and effort. I'm inclined to do everything we can to make it as nice as we possibly can. We've got folks that, from the design, when it was constructed back, we, we've got folks that, I'm sorry, from, from the original project standpoint, it was $48,000. I know then there was the memorial on top of that. There's a lot of folks that have donated to that and that really, from both a personal and emotional and a lot of different levels, I really think the site's very important. And I know we have a town event there every year that's important to our police chief. It reflects on the town in that respect. I'd be inclined to spend a little bit extra and let's do what we can to really make it as, as nice as possible from, from a landscape architecture standpoint. Let's make sure we get the right trees, the right look, the right appearance and the right feel for, for that location. It's a couple thousand dollars extra. We, we, you know, I think that's one place to invest it. It reflects well on the town and it's an important site. That's my comment.
I did receive public comments on this item.
I did receive public comments on this item.
Yes, go ahead, Caitlin.
Okay, from Anita Bailey, 474 Zephyr Way. Combination of shade structure and shade trees, shade trees, this option should be added to the survey and resent. And then I have Diana Davis.
Diana Davis, 440 Sunset Way. I think you would have had more participation in the survey if the question hadn't been binary trees or shade. It was just too difficult to answer. The survey would have meant more to the citizens if you provided specific designs and then people could have elaborated on those specific designs. The location is very important to the community and you can tell by the turnout from the 9/11 annual remembrance event that it is an important area for the community. And I think that you do need to have professional design of the space and allow the citizens to comment on the plan. I suggest Nagla Hamas as for the structural elements and then Lori Marco Michaels for the landscape for the area. The 9/11 remembrance and the veterans memorial would not be well served by just adding a few more pitch apple trees. I mean, we don't want a monoculture to start with, but this location needs to be a place of contemplation and a place of reflection. The space should evoke a mood and that space, and that's a specific skill set that I've seen both Nagla Hamas and Lori of Arcobacchus accomplish. You know, the height and the scale is important. That's why the pergola with the Bocanvillea kind of enveloped you when you got into the space and that with the running water of the fountain and the sculpture. It did allow for that mood of contemplation and reflection. And I don't think adding a few pitch apple trees is going to do that. Thank you.
No additional comments.
Hey, any other member of the public wish to be heard on this?
Yes.
John Staluto, 401 Sunset Way. I had concerns with, there's a couple sable palms there and I'm afraid you're going to chop those sable palms down. One of them is damaged, but again, it's not like a tree. Okay, you put some plants around it or at the bottom, it looks great again. And Jim's idea, you know, if we create a pergola, it's going to have to be hurricane ready and everything. Could we do something in a temporary type thing like, you know, they have those umbrellas that come up and open up and they're huge. And it would be something portable. We could close it back down or take it away or whatever. It's not something that would have to be hurricane ready. But they have a lot of beautiful, like I say, for lack of another word, umbrella that to come up and would hang over. If you're just going to cover that area where the pergola was, you know, maybe something like that.
There are actually, when I was Googling and doing research on pergolas made of other materials, there's a lot of different sail shades and sunshade type things.
And I thank you for your comments, John. I think one of the issues there is that's a wind tunnel coming through there. And even if it's not very windy that day, you still get a lot of wind in that area because there's no condos blocking it. So that would be, but that was an excellent thought. I don't think that staff would necessarily think that's a good idea. Andrea, you said that staff would not go with Lori. But i- if it's something that she came out and bid on it, I mean, it's something that council could make that decision on. It's not like, are we doing a bid? And Jason, maybe you can explain this more. You said a couple thousand dollars, but I'm looking at a landscape architect at 5,000. Is it something we're going to go out to bid on?
I thought we had the towns landscape architect, so I didn't think we needed to go out to bid on that if we've got a
The towns, right. But that's at 5,000, right? Just for a design? Am I correct in that, Andrea?
That's ballpark.
So that's for the design, not even for the materials and the oversight, I would think. So that's probably going to go upwards of how much, Joe, do you think, having done, have you experienced this before? So 5,000 for a design and then you have the oversight of the work?
We usually, we usually do the oversight of the works.
Okay. So then materials. So we're at about $4,000 difference. Just throwing that out there for you.
I think a consideration would be too that if we did hire a landscape architect, UDS, I think it would be helpful to have him, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, to give him a little bit of direction. I mean, do we just take him out there and say, have at it? Or do we say, this is, this is what we used to have? Maybe something similar to this. Again, you know, Peggy had wanted to go out to the residents and see what the feedback was. Do they want a shade structure or do they want trees? They overwhelmingly said trees. So do we go to our landscape architect and ask him, okay, you're the professional. We are looking at some kind of landscaping to provide shade, but to bring in a certain atmosphere, a reverence. And then, you know, it just seems a little open-ended. So if we do go with
I think you're on the right track.
The professional, you know, is that the direction that we're wanting him to go in? I mean, I think some of the feedback is good. I think what Diana said with that emotional and what you're going to reflect, I think that that's something that he could convey. But again, you know, he's the professional. And do we want to go with a structure? Because again, you're not looking at $4,000. You're looking at his idea plus a structural engineer to come in and make sure that it's structurally sound and goes through the permitting process, you know, so.
No, I, my understanding was that at least we were, the structure didn't get the support from the resident feedback that we got. We would go with the shade trees and I think it's important to convey that it's a 9/11 remembrance site and a prospective site for a veterans memorial. And that's very important in terms of
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Because it's, I wish we had more time. We don't have a lot of time. It's a safety concern. I know about it. I have to act. So even if you don't do anything, I'm going to rip that thing up somehow. So.
So we need a consensus to demo the footers.
Exactly.
And mulch it. That's without question, I think.
Thank you.
Didn't we mention that last month or two weeks ago? Yeah, I did. I mentioned it. I said, what if we take out the concrete? Because we know one way or the other is just don't put the concrete back in.
We did say withhold it because it was two weeks away.
Yeah.
Was that not decided on because there was some savings to be had if we were going to do some other work? To do it simultaneously. But if we're not doing a structure, then
The contemplation was if we, if the residents wanted a structure, why rip everything out if we're not going to go back and do the footers and do the concrete? So.
So without a structure, we can do all that demo work and mulch the area?
Let me, can I finish the whole thought? What I'm suggesting is we hire or we only have one bid on a GC. We need a GC because we have to remove all that stuff. Tony said it's, he's not going to
Three bids.
You did, you did get three bids? Okay, thank you. I did ask for that. You told me that. Thank you. So we do have three bids. So it's so hard to schedule work today. I say we schedule that work. We go ahead and make an appointment with Rob, get him out there immediately and say, this is what we want to do with extending the pavement out there. If you're in agreement, if he's in agreement with that, then we do it. If he's not in agreement with it, we'll take it back to you, but we'll ask him what kind of shade trees and all kinds. So we'll get a professional involved with the landscaping. But I need somebody to sign and seal the, you know, I need a contractor to sign and seal. This permit has to be signed off. So I need either urban design or a GC to move forward. So I'm recommending we call up Rob tomorrow and we say, this is option one. Do you like option one? Forget about the trees. You're going to look at the landscaping. That's what you're saying, I think, is to say, get a professional to look at the landscaping because I'm hearing what you're saying. You're making a lot of sense, but remember that site has a tremendous amount of salt spray. There's not a lot of things that are going to work there. So we're going to discuss that with him and let him make the decision. I mean, he's the professional.
I'd like to, when you speak with him, if you could emphasize the use of native trees and plants which are salt tolerant. So if that could be a priority use as
Well, not all, they're not all salt tolerant.
No, I understand that, but yet if you could say native.
Native, yes, native.
Please, yes.
Yes. Is pitch apples native? I don't know the answer to that. I'll ask it that.
So Joe, that's going to be $5,000, right? When we go with
Well, she's just giving you a ballpark. If we just call them out there and say, this is what we want to do. We want to remove all this, remove all this concrete, get the footers out, extend the path, and then we want to enhance the landscaping. I don't know what he's going to charge us, but we're just going to talk to him about that. Is that agreeable?
Yeah, sure.
I'm hearing yes. Okay. And I will stress native.
Keeping with our comp plan.
Yes.
Fifty percent.
And if anyone out there has any suggestions on trees, we're all ears.
And Lori, DeeDee did say that she wanted to get ahold of you because she wanted to work with natives on the back of the park if that would ever proceeded. And she said she wanted me to tell you that she would work with you on the natives at any time.
Great. We're going to do the demo and put that happen. She's just asking for clarification. If what I just recommended, you said yes. If Rob is in agreement with removing and putting that extended pavement, we're going to go ahead and do it.
Why would it, isn't that up to us whether we want an extended area, not him? Or like, isn't that our decision?
Yeah, it is your decision. So if you don't like that decision, then you tell me now. I won't do that.
Well, I
I could just do the demo first.
For a ceremonial area, then I'm in favor of expanding the paved, that apron area where the benches
Right.
Go, but yeah.
That's all we're doing is putting in an extra so many feet of
And then moving the benches back onto that new apron.
Correct.
Or onto the new additional area.
All that stuff with option one and then he'll look at it with fresh eyes on the landscape.
And we're not removing any of the sable palms in the meantime?
No.
I'm not going to remove anything until I hear what Rob has to say about the landscaping design.
And I think, Joe, you have at least three council members that are for just straight shade trees anyway. So you have the vote and which means that
I hear
if you go ahead and increase that, that concrete.
Thank you. Yes. Yeah, the structure's
That's probably the vote that would happen anyway.
Yeah.
Is that good? You have what you need, Andrea.
You're good?
Okay, just so I'm clear. I get a little dizzy. So I'm going to have a meeting with Rob Dinsmore. He's going to come out, take a look at the site. I'm going to explain to him that obviously we need to demo the concrete, the footers, the root balls. If he, with his professional insight, is agreeable to re-pouring a new concrete area out there, as we have explained, it's the same footprint, but about two and a half feet extended towards those pitchapples. If he says, yeah, that's a great idea, let's do that. And then he could offer some additional suggestions on native plants that would work well in the area. Correct?
That sounds good to me.
Very good.
Thank you.
I would add, if he wants to tweak the concrete in a little bit, I'm okay with that too. If, you know what I'm saying, the pad.
You mean make it a different size? Is that what you
Exactly. If he wants, again, if he wants a bigger, smaller, more symmetrical, whatever he wants to do.
I'd be curious to know. I mean, that'll come before us on the size change.
I'm saying it's not coming for you. Soon as I get it, I'll send it to you all, but we're going to go ahead because I need to demo that thing.
You can, so you're saying that he's going to demo more than just four more or demo more or both?
No, no, the demos only that path with the demos already.
Not a path, not a path.
Okay, thank you.
Just that concrete section
Getting late.
That was underneath
With the footers in it. We're just demoing that. And we already have option one. We showed you where we want to put a new concrete slab. And then if he wants to tweak it a little bit, I'm not going to not allow him to tweak it a little bit.
What, why do you foresee him? And when you say tweak, you mean specifically add to the concrete. So why do you foresee him modifying that plan?
Because he's a professional. He might say, put a hole here for landscaping or do some, I don't know what he's going to say. I don't want to hold it up just for a minor adjustment to the pad.
But there's nothing being held up because it's coming back to us anyway for
No.
No, that's
So this is the last we'll see of it.
This is the last you'll see except for the trees. I'll bring back the trees.
So the design is done?
Yes. That's what I'm saying, but
I personally would like to see, if he's going to expand that concrete area, I would like to know more about that because that's not what I'm approving tonight.
If it's substantial, if it's anything more more substantial than what staff had recommended.
I can retreat. I can take that back. If he doesn't like our idea at all, we won't do it.
Thank you.
So DeeDee, it's where the footers are, you know, so that would have to come out anyway. So I think that's the only part that they're talking about.
Thank you for bringing that up. Let's say he wanted to connect. Let's say he wanted to adjust the pad a little bit. I'm not going to hold up the process because he's a professional. That's what I'm saying. But if you want me to bring it back, I'll bring it back. I'll do the two steps. It's whatever your preferences. I have to do, I have to remove it. I don't have to pave it. I don't have to pour it. Yes, you're correct.
But you're talking like small modifications.
Minor.
Right. Like if he just wants to connect like this piece to this piece and leave this green to put a tree there.
Well, I don't know. It changes the whole dynamic of what we're discussing tonight. So to me, that's changing the design.
Okay, if you're not comfortable, we'll leave it the way it is.
No, I would like to see it come back. Not one or, again, not one or the other. It doesn't have to be the way it is now. It can be with his suggestion, but I'd be curious to know what his suggestions are.
Give me guidance.
I'd like to proceed.
Just give me guidance. I need guidance, that's all.
I'm with proceed to go forward with it.
Thank you. I'll keep you all informed as we meet with it.
Can I just add, you know, I don't mind a sculptured look. Garden sculptured look also. And so that includes natives and maybe some non-natives. So I don't know if council feels very strong that we have to stay with all natives. I didn't know if that was the direction that you thought you had to go, Joe. But I, the sculptured look is always nice also, so.
I'm open to the professionals' opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I defer to the landscape architect on it.
With a preference
Open-minded.
To natives.
With the preference, yes.
Follow our code.
It's a difficult situation. I wish we could put oaks in there. Sorry about that. Getting away from the mic. I know you, got you all nervous.
Okay, you've got what you need, Andrea.
Okay, when she sits down, she's comfortable.
I want to bring up two things about the 9/11 memorial. Number one, almost every week in the activity report, the fountain's leaking. They're repairing the leaks. And that fountain's almost 20 years old, the same age as the fountain was that we replaced at Friendship Circle. And I don't know if it's repairable or if we're going to have to keep repairing the leaks. I mean, should we replace it? I mean, now we're going to be doing this demo work and now is the time to consider. Tony, can you come up here and give us your thoughts?
You didn't think you're going to get off the hook tonight, did you, Tony?
Good evening, Mayor Council. First of all, before I answer your question or make mention of it, I just want to echo what Andrea and Joe both said about the footers and everything, the unsightliness about the site. I think it's really critical that we get moving on it as quickly as possible. So at least it's presentable and it, you know, really reflects better on the site than it currently is. But to answer your question, you know, I'm running out of fingers to plug holes in the dike. You know, that unfortunately, that little fountain has been leaking. We've made a few attempts, not only recently, but in the past as well to, to, you know, prevent it from leaking. We made a little bit of headway this time. Leaks aren't quite as bad, but you know, it's, it's an old sandstone type of fountain. It's become more and more porous. You know, anytime you touch it, it tends to crumble. And I think that was the reason we had gotten rid of the one over Friendship Circle and replaced it. Having said that, I'm basically a lazy person. I think if it makes sense to replace it with something that is going to be much more functionable, functional and it'll continue to run with less maintenance, you know, that's terrific. And you know, maybe something that would reflect the site a little bit more so than it currently does, you know, would also be beneficial. But again, I think that's going to be pretty much a factor of two things. Number one, the desire to counsel, and then two, obviously the costs. We'll try to keep it running as best we can with as little inconvenience as possible, but you know, like I said, we're just kind of running out of fingers to plug holes in it because, you know, it's, as you mentioned about 20 years Because you know, it's, as you mentioned, about 20 years old now. And you know, I think it's reached, it's the end of its useful life. One final thing that I can, I want to mention too, if there is a desire at some future point to replace it, then I would suggest going with the same kind of MO that we use with the fountain at the lake. Keep the pump out of the water. We've replaced it on numerous occasions. We just replaced it recently. It's a submersible pump. Water and electricity always don't work the best together. So if we had the pump outside the, the fountain itself, like we do at Friendship Circle, it works out a heck of a lot better, much more functionable, functional, less maintenance and so on and so forth. And obviously more economical because you're not replacing pumps as frequently. Did I answer your question, Jim?
You, you certainly did. The last time we had rendering, not renderings, but we had fountains that we looked at from different manufacturers and Andrea.
Yeah, that was a vendor over on the west coast of Florida and they're imported. Not so sure how that works these days with them coming over on the slow boat from China. Sorry, not really from China.
Italy.
Italy, it, it was, it was from Italy. So they, they do have some fountains in stock or at their, their location. But the majority of them come over from, from Italy. So I would make a recommendation, Stonewares, who we bought the original from. And they haven't been in business for a number of years. So if we did go with replacing the fountain, I would echo what Tony just said. Do the process that we had before. This is a very small size. They might have something like that in stock. But they, they were great to deal with. And then, then Stoller was, was pretty good too. But I would recommend going with them.
Come back to us with options.
Sure, sure.
That agreeable with the council?
Mm-hmm, Tony, there's concrete below there, right? So that whatever we do, if that was lifted off, something else could be put back.
There's a slab. Okay.
Okay, nu- number two, I mentioned this last council meeting about the memorial at the southeast corner of the bridge. And Caitlin, do you have the picture that you can put up there, please? This, this is the memorial, it's very, it, it's respectful, it's very low key. Give it the distant shot.
The other shot, please.
No.
She'll get it, so, okay. Yes, takes a second.
Anyway, it's.
That one.
It, there you go. It, it's, it's low key, it's respectful. I just want to mention that if we go to, if we commission an artist to do this, the artist fee alone is probably around 20 grand.
No.
Up more than that? Okay, so the artist fee alone is more than $20,000, not counting the artwork. But this is something, we, we do something like this similar, something to keep in mind that's, that's, you know, it's an option for us. I just, there's a beautiful plaque on top and, you know, description of the two guys that got killed. And it's very low key, it's very respectful. I just wanted you to see it so you had an idea of what they did at the bridge. So thank you, Caitlin. So when we talk about it, you have an idea.
That's great, Jim, thank you. And then just the thought, we could maybe get a donation for this too. So we might be able to do something if council thought it was the right thing to do, that's more grandiose based on, you know, there's a lot of veterans out there that want to give money towards, you know, these memorials and things. So it's a possibility, but that's something we can open up and talk about.
And another thing too, we can build it and say, if you want to donate it, this is what it costs. And then you'll be recognized. I mean, you know, so.
Sure.
If, if three of you agree, I would, I would include it in the discussion with Rob.
And I would agree with that to discuss a memorial design.
Yes, thank you.
So Dee Dee, he's, he's discussing that particular one, right? Or a memorial design, just a, a design?
Yeah, just to put some kind of remembrance.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Yes.
He's, he's landscape design, right?
Yes.
So maybe throw in there the fountain.
The fountain, we, we, Andrea's right, we, I think we were good with the, the fountain now because we went to the right country. That was just a joke. No, th- those, these are stone, actual fountains. They're, they're not made of granite, 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 which is stone. Yes, they're all granite. And they last for hundreds of years in Italy and Greece and all those great countries in Europe. That's what we have to replicate, not what we put in the past. And, and the pump is not a submersible pump, which is in the water all the time. The chlorine eats it up. It's actually outside the, the fountain itself. So we'll work on that too. Thank you.
Anything else, Jim?
No, sir.
Okay, comments from the town manager?
All right, I have one and Tony's going to tag team with me on this. If you recall, last November, exactly a year ago, we went out to bid on tree trimming. And we only got two bids. And the reason for that, we believe, is because landscapers don't want to deal with this. And that's our, remember RFP process, the numbers are too low for a formal process. So we got a price last year of $25,000 or $10,000. Of course, we went with the $10,600 number. So what I'm asking for is to waive the formal bidding process. Just get three formally and have this person, which we liked, bid on it again and get several more informal bids. And so we can expedite this instead of going out with a formal RFP, which scares people away and actually probably draws up the price because it's such a small thing, everybody's so busy. So I would recommend to, with, not do the formal bidding, do the informal bidding. Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, did, maybe do a motion because with the, the inspector general.
You want a motion ahead of time to?
Yeah, the inspector general.
Well, then do a motion to waive the bidding or waive the bidding process.
For, before tree trimming.
For tree trimming services.
The bidding process for the trimming of trees.
And we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It'll be based on quotes.
Yes, thank you. That's it, I think you're going to go over the calendar? Yeah, thank you, that's it.
Comments from the town attorney?
No, sir, thank you.
Comments from staff?
Yes, Mayor, in the upcoming weeks, there is going to be a surplus auction in which the town will be including two police vehicles and two Polaris ATVs. If anyone's wants more information, to contact the finance director, Matthew Pizansky. For the upcoming dates, the town center is closed tomorrow in observance of Veterans Day, November 11th. On the election qualifying period for seat number five ends on Tuesday, November 16th at 12:00 PM. The town center will be closed in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday, November 25th and the 26th. The next planning and zoning board meeting is December 6th. And the next town council meeting is December 8th.
Any other comments from staff? All right, comments from council, Dee Dee?
Yes, hi. The painting there to your left is owned by Tony and Si Seymour. They would like to donate the painting to the town. And especially because we're not going to put back a pergola in Bogan Via, it would be great to keep that here. There's a nice spot on the wall upstairs in the library to the right of the elevator. And I'm wondering if we could hang it up there to commemorate that lovely spot. Not this, not commemorate the spot on the wall, to commemorate the remembrance area. And do I need consensus to, to do that? To hang a painting?
You can direct us to do it. The, the, the normal process, when we, we look at this, with any donations, we take it to senior staff. We say, do we need it or not? And then we, senior staff looks at where to place it. So that would be our normal process.
Does anybody have any thoughts or feelings about the painting?
I, I would take it. I think it's a beautiful painting, so I'd definitely take it. I just don't know the location you're talking about. I mean, I know about it.
So when you go to the library and you're just sort of coming out on the right, you won't see it when you're coming out of the elevator, but you'll see it when you're going back in or if you're in the room. It's the only open spot other than next to the TV and that just doesn't seem like the right place for it.
I'd be all for accepting the donation. I don't feel the need to try and micromanage the location of where it would go.
Trying to troubleshoot it because we have so many paintings around. Every, every wall space is, is almost full.
Please thank, thank him for donating.
I would just defer to the staff on the locations.
Well, we'll take, we'll take that into consideration, your suggestion.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Should, so should I?
Thank you.
Should I let the Seymour's know?
Yes, please.
The town will accept it?
Yes, thank you.
And I'll, I'll give, oh, you must have their information if you want to send a thank you letter or something like that.
I think we do. Yes, thank you.
Wonderful, thank, thank you.
No, thank you.
Let's see, I also spoke to Joe about next month's TPA presentation. And we spoke about preparing some questions ahead of time that he can share with Alyssa so that she can be prepared with answers. So I'm going to send Joe some questions that I have and he can forward them to her. I don't know if the rest of council wants to prepare some questions as well. That's just a suggestion box kind of thing. The last FWC grant for aquatic restoration, since we didn't get the event area grant, I'm going to again encourage the town to apply for the FWC aquatic funding.
We, we, we've talked about it a little bit and we definitely agree. So we'll, we'll talk to you about that.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Okay, Elaine?
I have no additional comments.
Peggy?
Oh my gosh, I'm going to talk really fast. So on the TPA, I had a great conversation with Alyssa Frank from the TPA last week. And consequently, that's what you were sent on the information and updated information. And then Joe and I met with Alyssa and discussed a little bit more detail, the remarks and additional questions we had. And it, it was important to understand the next step in, in, you know, where we go from there. And so I just want to quickly just kind of wrap up what we talked about. It falls, so everybody knows that the, the US1 project falls on a state road. So an LEP certification is not required, so that was a positive for us. We now have a formal name called Complete Streets. So this project doesn't take away from any car lanes whatsoever. So I think that's a real positive for our town, of course. And it, and it creates, it actually creates safer facilities for the other users, like the pedestrians and the bicyclists. There's no requirement for signed and sealed engineering plans, that was another positive. There is a community letters of support, but that can come from the businesses that are along US1. We read that the average cost per mile is going to be about a million dollars, but we have $5 million available in funding, so that should cover that in its entirety. So that was another positive. And it, it looks like we don't have to have any curbing, large curbing, which was a concern, I think, from staff and from the police department. So we have various options on the curbing now. And the only thing that I heard yesterday, Joe, that, you know, I wanted to get Alyssa's, more input from Alyssa, was the deceleration lanes and possibly having to eliminate some of those. And that's something we can vet at the next meeting. But when I talked to Alyssa, I did call her today, she said that would not be true for Donald Ross and it wouldn't be true for Universe. So that's really good too. So then we can take a look at that. She also said that we also have the option of using our discretion on how far we take this and if we want to eliminate sections. So I think it, you know, a lot of the obstacles that we thought would be there, might not be there. So I'm looking forward to speaking to her when she comes in December. And I think Connor's going to be here perhaps too. Then the other area is articles. I mentioned Bob Hamilton's article about the, what was the first one? There was one about Storm Secure Underground Pilot Program. These are things that perhaps we could talk about in the next goal setting workshop. And I don't know if we're going to be setting that up or not, but we can talk about that perhaps at the next meeting on when we want to do the goal setting. Oh wait, that usually comes in April.
Yeah.
Yeah, after the election.
After the election.
I had suggested a second goal setting meeting for the year, so I'm still open to that.
Yeah, okay, so then we can talk about that. The other thing was the American Planning Association for the Planning and Zoning Department. I know that they discussed at the planning and zoning meeting, the fact that this could delay the process of getting our plans, of individuals getting their plans back because it had to go to planning and zoning. But I just was thinking of that as it was being discussed and I thought, well, what if they, they kind of expedited that portion of it? The, the appearance criteria and expedited that in, because then it still has to go through engineering. So it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to delay plans because that's one thing that Juno Beach is known for, is how quickly we get our building plans through the department. And we're well known for that and people appreciate building here because of that. But you know, that's something that staff, I just had an idea and thought that maybe staff could take a look at that and expediting that through to planning and zoning ahead of time, perhaps. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, Lynn.
Yes, sir.
Does Florida statutes, they prohibit a elected official from donating, campaigning or endorsing a candidate for office?
No, the, the only thing that's, so elected officials can endorse, can contribute, can express their views. The only thing that the statutes prohibit is corruptly using your authority to, you know, coerce others. But other than that, you retain all of the rights that any other person has. Basically a First Amendment issue.
Okay.
You asked about council, council, right? Not staff.
That was council, staff can as well, but they can't work on campaigns, on town business and that, you know.
Does it say that, Lynn, though? I thought it read in there that, that count, that staff is not supposed to get involved in council meetings. There's actually a section in our.
Well, it might be our policy. The statutes say town employees may not, may participate in cam- campaign activities during their off duty hours only, may not participate in campaign activities of any type during working hours. So they, and they can wear buttons and lapel pins and that, unless it's otherwise prohibited by the personnel policies.
What document was that?
Oh, this is something I, Jim had asked me about the topic. And so back when Ellen Andel announced her candidacy for Congress, I kind of put together all the statutes, so I had it all in a memo, that's what that is. I'd be happy to.
Yeah, would you send it to Caitlin and share it with us?
Absolutely, I will send it to you. It's, yeah, and I, I, because it just jogged my memory, I'm like, gee, I did this already. I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
And, and Joe, staff, council gave staff direction to go ahead and spray the torpedo grass with the Tigger. Yes, going ahead with it. You, you've gone ahead with it? We've, no, we're going ahead with it. When, when does that start?
If I may, I was just kind of holding off on doing that until a decision was hopefully determined this evening as to how we're going to move forward with an environmental consultant. And I wanted to just get some of their input, speak to them and ensure that they're on board. So, you know, and to also add some oversight as well. So when we do do it, I suspect a few weeks is not going to make, you know, a monumental difference